Everybody, if we could get you to join us and stand to the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to take note that all the commissioners are present this morning. And, Peter, are there going to be any agenda changes today?
Uh, no, there are not.
Okay. And now we're gonna go to public comment for items that are not on the agenda.
Hare Krishna.
Good morning.
Morning. I was just thinking, Hare Krishna, and most of us know it as a greeting or a chant, and, but what does Hare Krishna mean? Especially Hari, we all know Krishna is the god of compassion and love, but Krishna, uh, Hari. Hari is not a title for Krishna, and it's not, it's not a forename, you know, it, in Ladhish, it's not a Christian name. For Krishna, it's Vishnu, it's the god that diminishes illusion, and perhaps we should diminish some illusions here. Much as the ancients did, they found reasons to explain the unexplainable, whether it's a feeling, or right and wrong, or the questions of the heaven and earth, the makeup of the body, the human biology.
Carl, can I interrupt you for one moment? I know that people are struggling out in the audience to hear you, and I know you talk softly, I just, if you want people to get your message, you're gonna have to speak up just a teeny bit more.
I carry a big stick, though.
You carry what?
Carry the big stick, though. The, when, when the ancients developed these myths and gods to explain, what was unexplainable, they had very little in the way of science. And now, in this day, we do have science, and we do have reasons for what we do, except for planners. Planners still rely on myths, and they compile those myths in what's called the Environmental Impact Report for cannabis. The Environmental Impact Report for cannabis that we recently saw has several problems with it, and one of them is that it mitigates without reason, or without doing research into the, into the problem that they're trying to address. One of those problems was odor, and a related problem that they completely decided to ignore was allergens and health impacts. So, at the beginning of this week, I thought about the Environmental Impact Report that was created, and I decided, maybe we better look to something else, another, another report that a lot of jurisdictions, a lot of, a lot of governments are using, and that is the Health Impact Assessment. And in a, in a product like this that's being produced, a health impact assessment would be beneficial, which would light onto some of these, some of these problems, some of these health issues, and it would allow you, the Planning Commission and staff, to make a decision based on logic, rather than myth, rather than, than, than something that, something that is made up, or something that is not fully explained. So, you know, at this point in the process, things get really, not confusing, but really testy, and you're gonna have a lot of special interest groups, marijuana growers and ban proponents that are gonna come forward, calling each other, calling each other names and calling board member names, perhaps even going as far down as the, as the Planning Commission, and at this point, I move on. I don't, I don't participate at this point, because I participate in another respect, someplace else, and I don't want them calling me names. Much like that 20th century philosopher and pop star would say, Rick James, "I need $50 to make you holla, I get paid to do the wild thing, and I'm not gonna do it here, I'm not gonna do it here." So, enjoy your marijuana regulation, you can mess it up anyway, and the board will, probably, you know, you guys, you guys really do, do, do think about, think these issues through, and you're, and you're one step away from, you're removed one step from the, from the public, which means you have less pressure put on you by, by, by the board's constituents, which is a good thing, you're able to do something, you're able to make a difference. The, the board is gonna react towards the end to what they think is gonna get 'em reelected, to what they think will keep 'em out of trouble. You don't have, you have to just hunker down and make the decisions here, and make the, make the ordinance and send it to the board. Thank you for the time today, I have three seconds left over, two seconds, one second. Got my one he's worth again, have a great day.
You never got a yellow light, though.
Oh, I'll use my time to write my name down. Dr. Prepona Randall Smith, District Three. I am a registered cannabis cultivator, we're a small indoor operation up along Highway Four in Hathaway Pines. I'm just here today, I'm concerned, not so much about the content of the EIR, I'm more concerned about the process, and I may, maybe I got this wrong, but I was under the impression from the end of the last meeting, that the intention is to only consider the ban version or alternative of the EIR, and, and I just want to come here and urge you to please look at the, at everything, look at all the options, because the title of our EIR report, FEIR, is Medical Cannabis Cultivation and Commerce Ordinance Project. I believe to just look at only the ban and nothing else, not to look at the project, it could, it could have the effect of depriving the public of its voice during the public process, and so I just urge you to please look at regulations, don't just ram through a ban, because I believe that that will, it, I try to be as intellectual as I can, I try to bring constructive ideas to the table, I've done it numerous times before the board, and I don't like to have everything at the emotional level, which is not helpful, but at the moment, I'm a little concerned about the possibility of a ban just being rammed through and being passed by the board, and I think that you guys, this body here, has an opportunity to weigh in on the regulation ordinance, there are plenty of mitigation measures documented in the EIR that can take care of the problem, that can keep the neighbors happy, keep it out of sight, out of their ears, out of their noses, there, there is a way to arrive at a good constructive regulation that won't tear this place apart. I'm also not thrilled with all the vitriol and the name-calling, and the other day, I went before the board and announced the formation of a brand-new Calco Cannabis Stakeholders Group, and we are seeking to form a partnership with our county government, a constructive partnership, so that we can arrive at some regulations that everyone can live with, and so on the 28th and 29th, we will be here to share some ideas, in the hopes that we can, you know, if you send the ban up to the board, fine, but maybe also send an option, send an alternative, that would be a regulation, so that we don't tear this place apart. So I'm pretty concerned. If you pass a ban, I'm outta here, I'll take my money, my dollars, my, my, I'll pull out, and go, go do business somewhere else, but I'll wait, I'll, I'll pay rent to my landlord, because I'm very loyal to him, he's a very good man, a father, businessman, and when the pendulum swings back, and we finally have regulations in this county, I'll come back. But if I pull my business out and go to Sacramento, or Merced, or somewhere else, I intend to live here, I love this county, I love Highway Four, I love Murphy's, I'm a backpacker, I have a lot of reasons to want to live in this county, and it makes me feel very uncomfortable to think that there are people in this county that don't want people like me here, because of the kind of business I'm in. So anyway, please, let's look at all, let's look at everything, we will be here, the Calco Stakeholders Group will be here on the 28th and 29th, we're gonna offer, hopefully, constructive ideas, and hopefully we can get through all this, and cut through all the noise, and all the vitriol, and all the anger, and all the name-calling, and pull, bring this community together, we really need to do that. To just cast out 700 or 300 businesses, or 400 businesses, whatever it's going to be, is, it, I fear the consequences of that. We have three lawyers, I understand, on this body, I think that all of you understand, or should understand, the implications of that, probably far more than our current board. So, they might ignore you, they can ignore you, but at least you have an opportunity to offer something constructive, so thank you so much for hearing me out. Not here for name-calling, I'm not here for a fight, I don't want anything to do with a fight, so let's, let's do something that's good for everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Bill McManus, Chairman of the Committee to Ban Commercial Cultivation. While those documents are coming to you...
Sorry. Sorry.
Gosh, I went fast.
Hey, you got an extra second there.
Let me take back the good morning and use that time to say what I really wanted to say, okay? It's been, it's been rumored that there's going to be a vote, Board Supervisors, on a ban ordinance sometime in October. Of course, prior to that, it's gonna come to the Planning Commission for public comment, can't hardly wait for that, and two days of review, and hopefully a recommendation that'll go on to the Board of Supervisors. What you have in front of you, some of you may have seen some of these documents before, some of them look similar, they've been updated, and some are new. What we wanna do is to consolidate all of the information that we've been giving you for some time into one document, into one book, to make it easier for you to carry around, you don't have to root through your briefcase looking for curled-up paper, it's all right in front of you with some new stuff. The first three tabs relate to the ordinance, as we know, remember, back in January, on the 31st, the board took a poll and directed staff to prepare a ban ordinance, banning everything except that which was explicitly dictated by law to occur, which is basically your Prop 64 indoor growing stuff. Immediately, the ban committee got to work, we checked over the ordinance that came out of County Council's office and planning, and found it to be deficient and not in line with what the board had ordered. So we wrote up a series of statements about what is missing, and then went on to prepare a write-up, a markup, of the, the ordinance that came out of County Council's office, with the corrections and additions and deletions that we felt would make the document more representative of what the board had directed staff to do. So that's basically, in the first three tabs, we've also included a copy of Ordinance 1791, which is the dispensary ordinance, because we refer to it, that'll save you having to look it up. Since then, other issues have come up, I mean, we've spent years talking about, you know, whether marijuana's medicine or not, and farmers, and all this stuff, those days are over, you already know everything about that. Now, the, the issue that's coming up, and it's becoming a pretty hot issue, is the environmental side of marijuana. Now that they're starting to abate some of these grows, we're starting to see a lot of toxins and contaminants show up on marijuana grows, this will have a huge impact on what the board decides to do. Taking it out of residential neighborhoods, we'll take the marijuana out, perhaps, but it's not gonna take the contamination out. In Operation Terminus, there were 157 citations for environmental infractions, since then, there have been more investigations and abatements out there, and they're turning in even more citations. We petitioned the county to come up with an environmental citation registry as a beginning to start accumulating documents based on what the various departments do, whether it's Department of Water Resources, Department of Fish and Wildlife, whatever, because when they come in and they make a report, and there's contamination or a citation, when they leave the site, their documents go with them, and they're in file cabinets in Sacramento someplace. We would like to have a copy of those in this county, we would like it organized by Assessor's parcel number, so that citizens can find out if their neighbors have had serious environmental issues on their property that may affect them. Lastly, if you turn back to Tab Six, we've included what is considered to be the most definitive report on the environment and marijuana, it is sponsored, or it comes out of the U.S. Department of Forest Service and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. It is an extensive report by one of the, or some of the most renowned scientists in California and perhaps the United States, on the hazards of marijuana, as far as the environment is concerned. And just to go back to one thing that was said earlier, the EIR only, only identified the ban as the best alternative, if you start trying to regulate it, the EIR is defective, because it did not go into the chemical contamination issues associated with marijuana grows to the extent that we're seeing now. So you may have a problem with that EIR actually covering many of the topics that you'll find at the end of this book, so anyway, I hope you can read through them before the 28th, before, through the books, I look forward to being there on the 28th, and thanks for listening, bye.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Patricia Gordo, I live in Berson. I'm a grandmother and great-grandmother, and I come to you on those, on that. Calaveras Planning Commission, meeting September 14th, 2017, Calaveras Planning Commission. Two times in the past year, a petition was put to the public to sign, the last 5,200 signatures were 1,000 or more beyond what that needed to put it on the ballot. The people did not get to vote on the issue because the pot liars found a technicality that they used to disqualify it. Too bad County Council signed it off, because thousands of hours were spent by many volunteers in the searing heat to gather the signatures. The petition excluded all cultivation, manufacturing, processing, and delivery for all purposes within all unincorporated parts of Calaveras County, thus including dispensaries. Calaveras County has an opportunity to lead toward sanity or be a part of the insanity. The proliferation of this drug is not to meet medical needs, it is for recreational use, which leads to drug enslavement. The very difficult job you have before you would not be if the proliferation of marijuana had not been ignored by law enforcement and county officials in the past, and the emergency order that served as a further magnet to drug proliferation. Human lives have been negatively impacted by this issue. If our former sheriff were alive and had to do it over again, I have a feeling he would have been more proactive in stemming the growing of marijuana. No one is immune to its influence in our county. It's kind of like the leader of North Korea using the nuclear power information that Clinton gave to North Korea for its country's electrical needs, only to have North Korea turn around and use it to make bombs, to threaten and blackmail us, and share the nuclear secrets that Iran, who wants us, with Iran, who wants us dead. Also, for starters, the marijuana growing has nuked our soils. It's like a wedding cake, each tier for each year. The ingredients are herbicides, pesticides, high potency fertilizers, rodenticides, which can kill a life, all life, up and down our streams and rivers, our aquifers, our ponds and our lakes. Water is life, there is no life without it.
Thank you. Is there gonna be any other further public comment today? Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda and approval of minutes for the August 24th, 2017 meeting. Do any of the commissioners have changes, I'm getting that look.
Yes, on page six, under paragraph H, the first bullet point, last sentence says, "The commission requested that the dispensary ordinance be brought current with state laws." I don't think that's exactly right, it may be a little misleading, I think what the commission requested was that the redraft of the dispensary ordinance to be presented to the commission by County Council be brought current with state laws. So I think it was made clear that the commission has not considered what, if any, changes to the dispensary ordinance it would recommend to the Board of Supervisors, and this makes it seem as if we have decided if it's brought current with state laws, that's the end of it, that's not true. So my suggestion would be to add the phrase, well, make the sentence read, "The commission requested that the dispensary ordinance, that the redraft of the dispensary ordinance to be presented to the commission by County Council be brought current with state laws," period.
Read that one more time, because it doesn't give us the ability to edit the way you read that.
"The commission requested that the redraft of the dispensary ordinance to be presented to the commission by County Council be brought current with state laws."
And I thought that when we were discussing that, when we ended the meeting, that we wanted the ability to look at it, and if we felt changes needed to be made, that we wanted the opportunity to be able to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, correct?
Yes, and we could add, and I did have this language, and noted that the commission had not considered what, if any, further changes to the ordinance it would recommend.
Perfect. I would agree. Is that the only change?
That's the only change.
Anybody else have any changes?
Very minor change, I think on the item number seven, when the representative identified himself, I think he identified himself as a law clerk, so it would suggest that in the sentence, under the first bullet, after further discussion with the appellant's representative, the appellant withdrew their request, and then in the applicant presentation, assuming that other people remember this way I did, that we just identify Mr. Nedu as representative rather than attorney.
I think that's correct.
I do believe that was correct.
Yes. Good.
Well, you got four people agreeing with you. Wow. Miracles do happen. Okay, so we can make that change? Is there any further changes? No, okay, can I get a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I move that we accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries 5-0. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to our public hearings, and the first public hearing is Appeal 2016-900, and it looks like Paul's gonna be our presenter on this one.
Correct, correct, good morning.
Good morning.
Members of the commission, Paul Grow with Planning Department, and we're here to present Appeal Number 2016-900. This is Roland Teeman, on behalf of Arturo Orozco, he is appealing a denial of a commercial cannabis registration by the planning director. There are several reasons for denial of this registration, the first was illegal camping in excess of 14 days in a row, or excess of 30 days per year, there was unpermitted occupancy of a trailer on the site, also, the applicant failed to obtain a building permit for the construction of a structure in excess of 120 square feet on the property, that is a violation of local laws. Along with these code violations, there were several violations related to the September 7th deadline, the first was the appellant's failure to submit an NOI, and all of the required documents to the Central Valley Regional Waterfall and Control Board by the September 7th deadline, there's also failure to obtain and submit a business license application to the planning department by that same date, and a failure to submit a state seller's permit by the September 7th deadline. Location of the site, this is actually outside of Copperopolis, it's 20 acres, it's located at 2028 Sulky Court, it's the red, it's red site, you see over here on the left-hand side of the screen, it's about two miles from there back into Copperopolis Town Square, here's the turn on Highway Four, Obernance Ferry Road takes off over this direction, 20 acres, like I said, 2028 Sulky Court, and that's located within Section 6 of Township 1 North, Range 12 East. On June 30th, 2016, the applicant, Mr. Orozco, filed a commercial cannabis cultivation registration for 4,800 square feet of mix-like cultivation area, and was granted any registration in that amount and that type of cultivation. The first group of complaints here are code inspection, were related to a code inspection that occurred on January 24th, during that inspection, there were several violations observed, there was an improperly fenced cultivation area, and properly posted cultivation area, there were hoop houses needing permits. Additionally, there was illegal camping occurring in the trailer, and that trailer was unpermitted, it was an unpermitted occupancy of that trailer. The violations of other laws was, again, the unpermitted construction of an accessory structure that was located next to the trailer. Just gives you an idea of what's code-observed out there on that day, January 24th, on the upper left, you'll see the accessory structure, the accessory structure and the trailer are actually combined to form a pseudo-dwelling unit, let's say, the accessory structure consists of a sleeping area here in excess of 120 square feet, there is a covered roof over a deck area here, if you go to the back side of this, you'll see the trailer on the back, we walk around the back, there's the trailer, you can see the accessory structure is built right up against it, and there's a tarp covering it to make that connection as best as possible weatherproof. If you walk around to the right side over here and look back, you're going to see this view right here, again, the accessory structure, you're looking at the roofed-over-deck, the enclosed sleeping area is back here, and off to the side is the trailer, looking at the trailer, up, up next to the trailer here, you'll see that it's mounted on piers, the pop-out is extended, and it looks like that's been there for a while. Inside the trailer, again, we're looking at the pop-out, you can see the dining table there, moving over, there's the dining table, there's actually a crib here that appears to be occupied, that's a bed, a sleeping area off to the side, through the window here, you'll see there's, and through the, through the wall, air conditioning unit mounted. There was illegal camping, again, under Section 1795-165L, it refers you to a different section of the code that makes any occupancy on the site in a RV of this nature beyond the 14 continuous days, or 30 cumulative days in a year, illegal camping. The occupancy under 1795-165 in 14 is not allowed unless the trailer is properly permitted, there's a number of ways to do that, that you can obtain temporary occupancy, say, if you're up to six months, if you're building a permanent residence, under disaster recovery, temporary occupancy may be allowed up to two years, and under the urgency ordinance, it's also allowed within the fire area, within a quarter-mile fire area for temporary housing for employees. However, none of those... However, none of those circumstances apply to the situation here. A check of Building Department records, records within the planning department showed that there was no permit for occupancy pulled on this trailer at all. Just a few more, a couple more photographs of what was occurring there. This is the deck area. You're looking back into the trailer. If you were to stand there and look back to the left, you'd be looking at the accessory structure, the sleeping unit. This is between the accessory structure and the trailer. You can see there's some electrical connections going on here from the accessory structure into the trailer. And again, coming out of the trailer, you can see there's a cord coming this direction, which would actually lead you across this doorway and over to where we see a full-size refrigerator freezer sitting on the deck, along with a waste basket, waste receptacle. Move forward. This is the accessory structure. Again, you're on the deck in this photograph here and looking at the accessory structure. That is the door into the sleeping area. There's a service panel, electrical service panel. The photo we were just seeing with the electrical between the trailer and the accessory structure was right over there. Inside the accessory structure, you can see this is a pretty fully-developed sleeping area. You've got a bed, you've got a closet area over there. Again, through the window here, you've got a permanent, what appears to be a permanent air conditioning unit installed to provide cooling to that area. Unfortunately, this accessory structure was constructed without the benefit of obtaining the proper permits, and under 1795.165A2... Excuse me, that's wrong. It should be 1795.170A2. The planning director can revoke the registration of a registrant if there are violations of other laws occurring on the property under his control. So those were the violations that were observed out there. At the same time, on that date, on January 24th, there was a correction list that was issued to the registrant. Corrections to be completed at a later date were the fencing of the cultivation area and the permitting of the hoop houses. Those weren't required to be immediately taken care of. Corrections that were to be begun within 10 days included posting of the cultivation area, that there was a request to permit or remove the accessory structure, it being an illegal structure, and to cease the illegal camping in abandon the occupancy of the trailer. Compliance with that request... Excuse me, before I get into that, that request was received by the registrant on that date. He signed off on that checklist. Compliance with that list, six days later, on January 30th, the registrant presented proof of the posting that was taken care of. However, no proof of abandonment of the trailer or permitting or removal of the accessory structure was provided. On January 31st, Code requested a decision regarding removing or permitting that accessory structure, and they were told at that time that the registrant would get back to them. On March 14th, Code again emailed the registrant, asked for a disposition of that accessory structure. There was no response to that request, and after that, Code referred the application to the planning department with a recommendation for the NOI. And that's the bulk of the code violations. The violations regarding the September 7th deadlines, there were three of them. Again, 1795.165N4 requires the appellant to either provide the planning department with a notice of applicability or submit an NOI with all the required documents to the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board by September 7th, and provide proof that's submitted to the planning department. That proof wasn't provided. Within the planning department files, there was an NOI application. That application doesn't have a date stamp on it as far as the date it was received. However, I believe that application was actually dated June 30th, and not knowing any different, I would assume that probably came in with the application. However, there is no record at the Water Quality Control Board that they did receive the NOI or all of the required documents by that deadline. 1795.165N5A requires the appellant to obtain and provide a business license application to the planning department by September 7th of 2016. Actually, that's saying seven, should say 16. We did not receive that within the planning department by that date, so the appellant was denied that, denied for that reason also. Finally, the state seller's permit. The appellant was to obtain and provide a seller's permit to the planning by September 7th, September 7th, 2016, and we did not see that either. Conclusion, there was a code inspection conducted on January 24th, 2017. Several violations were observed in the 10-day notice to begin. The corrections given to the appellant. The registrant provided proof of one correction. However, the rest remained outstanding. Requests for correction, again, were provided by Code to the appellant on January 31st and March 20th of this year, and no further proof was provided by the appellant of corrections. Additionally, there were those three required documents to be submitted by the September 7th deadline, which weren't received within the planning department by that date. And because of those reasons, the registration was denied on July 25th of this year. And as of this date, we've received no further proof of correction as far as the code violations are concerned. An appeal was filed on behalf of Mr. Orozco by Mr. Teeman here, and that was received on August 9th. The appeal cited new evidence relative to the denial. That evidence wasn't discussed or disclosed in the appeal, and no brief was filed prior to this hearing. That concludes my presentation. I know Perry Moat is present in the audience with Code. Should you have any questions for her? And if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Just one, Paul. On page four, at the top of page four of your report, I assume that date there is supposed to be June 30th, 2016, first two lines.
Yes. Yes, yes. Correct. Yeah.
Commissioner Worcester, you have questions?
Yes. Under 17.95.165L, the camping on-site?
Yeah.
It cross-references 17.04.10180, which prohibits camping, et cetera, for more than 14 days in a row or 30 days per year.
Correct.
What information do we have that there was, in fact, camping or sheltering for more than the 14 days in a row or 30 days in a year?
There wasn't a follow-up inspection out there. I think I would like to refer that question to Ms. Moat because she was on-site there, and she observed what was going on, and I believe had a discussion with the appellant as far as occupancy.
Okay.
Can we?
Oh, okay.
Good morning.
Good morning. On the 24th, I spoke to Arturo Orozco when we did the inspection. When we were going over the... Talking about the structures and the campers, he explained that his daughter lived in the accessory room, bedroom, and that his son was living in the trailer, had been living in the trailer at that time.
Okay, but how do we know that anybody continued living in either of those places for 14 days in a row?
We don't know that they continued living in those beyond that point because I never had communication with them after that.
Okay, thank you. One more brief set of questions?
Yes, sir.
17.95.165N14 provides that you can use a recreational vehicle as a temporary residence as provided in 17.04.130 or Chapter 17.93. Now, I'm assuming from what you've said already that neither of the requirements for those two sets of rules were met here. Is that correct?
Correct, correct. There is no record of an occupancy permit, temporary use permit, permit of any kind being given out for the occupancy of this trailer under those two provisions.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further commissioner questions at this point?
Chair, if I may, I'd like to address a little bit more about the camping issue. I think it's evident to the commission that the relatively permanent nature of the structure, the presence of a refrigerator that was plugged in, the dining area that was clearly used, the presence of a crib, I think those would all militate towards the conclusion that camping had been going on there for quite some time.
Thank you. Okay, so it's your turn to give us a presentation.
Great. Good morning.
Good morning.
One and all. I want to make sure everybody... My name's Roland Teeman. By the way, I represent Mr. Orozco. I want to make sure everyone has the exhibits that I handed out earlier or that I gave to Madam Clerk.
We do, but we haven't had time to look at them or read them.
Okay, not a problem. I'm just going to use them in my discussion, so I just wanted to make sure everyone had a copy of them as I go forward. So, okay, great. So I'd just like to start. My colleague here has gone through the issues in this hearing. It looks like the miscellaneous issues regarding posting were corrected, so I won't address those. I'd like to start, though, by referring to Exhibit 1 of my packet, which is Code Section 17.98.070, Section B. And it's the discretion of the Board of Supervisors to remand a project back to planning. So it says, "In the event that new information is presented on appeal, the Board of Supervisors shall have the discretion to remand the project to the Planning Commission for consideration of new facts." And that's what I brought before you today, new facts. And at the end, you know, we would like that this case to be remanded back to the Planning Department to continue and complete the permitting process. So the new facts. So the first three allegations, the camping on-site, unpermitted trailer on-site, and violations of other laws, which are outlined in the Resolution Number 2017065. Those violations have all been corrected. If you refer to Exhibit 8, there's a picture of the corrected code violations, so that's where the trailer was at one time, is no longer there. So I would contend that as we sit here today, those code violations that were alleged have been corrected. They're no longer violations, nothing prohibiting code enforcement. We contacted code enforcement, actually, and asked them to go back out prior to the hearing to get clearance that those things have been corrected. They indicated that they were going to wait for the outcome of this hearing to then go out and do a final assessment of if they've been corrected or not. And so they're just waiting for the outcome of this hearing. I'm showing you documentary evidence that those things have been corrected. Those are new facts. Camping on-site. As Mr. Worcester here indicated, there's no evidence that anyone stayed in excess of 14 days in a row and in excess of 30 days per calendar year. I won't delve too much. My colleagues speculated that. It's... It looks like someone was there, but that's not evidence. That's not evidence before the board. The code enforcement officer indicated they didn't do any follow-up, so there's no evidence that more than 14 days or 30 days in a calendar year was surpassed. So I would contend, not only is the issue moot because it's been corrected, but additionally, there's no evidence before the board to make a decision on that allegation because there's no evidence been presented that that, in fact, Mr. Orozco was out of compliance on that issue. As a permit, as it goes to the unpermitted trailer on-site, once again, I indicated that's been rectified as documented in Exhibit 8. Water Board application deadline, I'd like to refer you now to Exhibit Number 2. It's the general order that's referred to in the county statute. And that general order I quote from in its overview, Number 4, and I kind of put parentheses around it, says, "Cultivation activities that occupy and/or disturb less than 1,000 square feet have not been demonstrated to cause more than de minimis impacts to water quality. Such cultivation activities do not pose a significant threat to water quality and are not covered under this general order." So my contention is that to require growers that grow less than 1,000 square feet to get a notice of intent from the Water Board is an unlawful ordinance because you're requiring somebody to get something from the state that's not required of the state, okay? There's no evidence been presented. Mr. Orozco was growing less than 1,000 square feet, so he's not required to conform to that general order because less than 1,000 square feet was grown. So I would contend that he's not out of compliance with that. He didn't meet, you know, missed the deadline on that because he wasn't required to get that under state law. Additionally, in the interest of caution, and I assume just, you know, trying to comply with the ordinance provisions, Mr. Orozco did file a timely notice of intent with the state Water Board, which is dated 6/30/16, which is prior to the deadline. It's incorporated into the Planning Department's packet. Also, I believe I have it, it is also located in Exhibit Number 7, Water Board Application. Now, I contacted the Water Board and talked to Michael Parker, and I will, just for the record, state that I received the packet from the Planning Department literally a week ago. I believe the post date on it was 9/7. So I had a very short period of time to get prepared for this hearing, but I did make calls to the Water Agency. We did talk to Michael Parker, and there is a confusion on the state's part because he received two checks for $2,500 from an individual named Arturo Orozco. It's attributed to another APN number, but the state is confused. He had to get, say, "I'm going to get back to you." This conversation occurred yesterday, which is the 13th of September. He indicated he would get back to me. He had to do further research because he had these two checks. He had an Arturo Orozco. I believe in the Planning Department's documentation, in the emails, which I believe I included in the Water Board Exhibit Number 7... There's the emails where it's... It talks about that there's some confusion at the bottom of the last email. Also, we have enrolled him, and he did, in fact, submit his fee. We have him submitting his NOI in July of 2016. I assume that's a few days after the June 30th date that he mailed it in. So my contention is he doesn't even need a water permit, okay? But if the board, you know, comes to the decision, well, he does need one because it's our ordinance, so I don't want you to confuse those two issues. He did submit it in a timely manner. Now, there's an issue with the Water Board with some checks from Arturo Orozco. They've got some notice of intent for a Tier 1 permit, so we're trying to get to the bottom of that. But once again, my contention is he doesn't even need a water permit pursuant to the law. So I submit that to you on those facts there. We indicated, I believe, planning indicated that... Oh, take that back. Mr. Parker did indicate that if the board was going to require a Tier 1 permit, and they did allow Mr. Orozco to go forward with the permitting process, because I believe he's dealt with a lot of these appeals processes, that he would process the paperwork for Mr. Orozco and, I assume, issue the permit, obviously, if he was in compliance with what's required with the permit, so. with the permit, so. So, moving to the business license and seller's permit deadlines. Mr. Orozco has obtained a seller's permit, and I, that's included in exhibit four. He, we attempted to obtain a business license prior to the deadline. Now, the Planning Department indicates that the deadline was September of last year, but I enclosed a letter, which is exhibit number three, from the Planning Department, which indicates that, since the urgency ordinance resulting cannabis cultivation permits you to operate while this application is processed, it is necessary to complete the business license. This should be done as soon as possible, but no later than August eleventh, twenty seventeen. So Mr. Orozco did, on eleven seventeen, we contacted the Planning Department to get the, the business license issued. They indicated to us that they wouldn't issue a business license until the outcome of this hearing, okay? That we're waiting for the outcome of the hearing, and that's why we're here today. But for that, we would have a business license. So the bottom line in this case, and why we believe that Mr. Orozco's appeal should be granted and allow him to continue with the, the process of getting his permit, that the defects have been corrected, code enforcement only needs one, one more time out there. I mean, they've only been out once, and they only need to go out one more time to verify the picture that's identified in exhibit eight, which is the corrected code violations. And then Mr. Orozco, based on what we presented here today, with the seller's permit, that he didn't, he wasn't out of compliance with getting his business license, would be in good standing with the permitting process. I would contend also that Mr. Orozco was in substantial compliance with the permitting process. He filed his paperwork in a timely manner. In the interest of caution, he applied for a state water permit that he didn't need in a timely manner. He paid his five thousand dollars, which I've included the receipt for that, for his application. That's payments to county, exhibit number five. He paid his first payment worth of taxes for forty-eight hundred dollars, which I've also included in exhibit number five. The violations that are alleged here, three of them were administrative, the seller's permit, the business, business license, and the water board permit, which I would contend he didn't even need. Those are administrative things. They were corrected very easily. So my contention is he was in substantial compliance, that the only thing that was missing from his application process was just a simple administrative actions. As far as the seller's permit can be done in one day, business license, same thing. So I talked about the, the September seventh deadline. Once again, I'm not, I'm not conceding that we need a water board permit, but that application we would contend is, was filed in a timely manner, as shown in the exhibit. The seller's permit, once again, was obtained same day, and the business license was, we didn't violate the deadline, because the vi, the deadline was extended by the Planning Department, sending that letter to Mr. Orozco that says he's got till the eleventh of August to, to apply for a business license, which he did, or was going to do, but the Planning Department said we wouldn't accept the application until the outcome of this hearing. The prejudice to Mr. Orozco, I mean, he's paid to the county eleven thousand, eighty-eight hundred dollars, or ninety-eight hundred dollars to the county in fees and taxes, and he's done a lot to, you know, apply, to, to, to do what he needed to do in the permitting process. So there's a great prejudice to Mr. Orozco if his application is denied and you deny his appeal. I look at the prejudice to the county. There's really no harm with the county in granting his repeal, his appeal. Your own ordinance allows you to remand it back to planning to, for, like I said, one, one inspection will basically put him back in the loop of the Planning Department and in the process of getting his permit. So one code enforcement infection, inspection to verify the corrections. So there's really no prejudice to the county. It's a minimal fiscal burden to the county in, you know, in verifying the corrections. I've already provided, it's at least the administrative corrections to you here in exhibits before you. And there's a minimal administrative burden, normal course of business for, you know, these application processes for cannabis businesses. So it's really no prejudice to the county to verify the corrections made and allow him to move forward with his permitting process. And then lastly, I'd just like to talk about, you know, due process in this case, and the notice that was given to Mr. Orozco of the violations. You know, Mr. Orozco is, not his primary language is not English, it's Spanish, and so I would contend that in exhibit six, there's an email by code, an email by code compliance that indicates Mr. Orozco has difficulty understanding English. The code, the email says, "The registrant doesn't speak much English." So I, I would contend that, you know, any communication that was done with Mr. Orozco, you know, could have been facilitated with somebody that spoke Spanish, even if Mr. Orozco was put on notice, "Hey, we've got to talk to you. You need to come to the board, to the Planning Department, or we're going to have someone come out and talk to you about what's going on in this case. Can you have someone there that can translate for you while we talk to you about these issues?" And so, is that mine, or?
That's you.
Okay, all right. Well, I didn't know I was on a timed limit, so.
It's fifteen minutes for the procedures, but finish up what you have to say.
Okay, let me just finish up briefly. Thank you, I appreciate that. Only one face-to-face with Mr. Orozco, and I'd refer to attachment A of the Planning Department's cultivation site correction list. This is the only documentation Mr. Orozco got. This is the list. It was a face-to-face, he did sign it, but really, his only directions are start within ten days. If you look at attachment A, it's in the Planning Department's board, that's all it says, start within ten days. That's it, with no other follow-up or anything like that that was going to occur. All subsequent communication was by email or phone, and it wasn't too directed to Mr. Orozco. It was directed to family members of Mr. Orozco that, or other individuals that the Planning Department was using as a go-between between them and Mr. Orozco. Well, there's no evidence that Mr. Orozco ever got those notices, ever got those messages, ever got those emails, emails that were sent to this third party. So to me, that's a lack of notice, and that's lack of due process in the procedure that was employed to Mr. Orozco, informing him of what he is facing, the potential consequences of not following through with this permitting process. And so, you know, I would contend, just the one face-to-face meeting with this one sheet that was given to him was the extent that Mr. Orozco received any notice of any violations or anything that he has to do. So the board's decision is very important to Mr. Orozco. It encompasses his property rights, and it's incumbent on you that he will be denied those rights if you rule against him. So I asked the board to grant remand for Mr. Orozco's petition back to planning, based on the corrections and the evidence presented to you today. So I thank you for allowing me to speak a little over my time.
Okay, if you could stay here for just a minute, because I'm sure there's going to be multiple questions coming from the commissioners.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
One question I have is, you, in your appeal letter of August eighth, twenty seventeen, you say that new evidence relative to this decision has become available, which is wonderful. You also complained today that you've had such a short period of time to prepare, because you just got the board's materials last week or whatever. You've given us no time to prepare, and I don't see, if you had new evidence that was available back on August eighth, why you did not submit it at that time.
Well, it took us a while to get that evidence together, and I, I'm perfectly comfortable for the board to take this matter under submission and rule at a later time. You know, I'm not necessarily asking for a decision today.
But we have a set schedule. We have full calendars, and you could have prepared us for all your arguments ahead of time, and I know, maybe you just had some conversations yesterday now, but you've unloaded all this on us and say, "Oh, we should send it back." I say, "You should have sent us this."
When I received notice that there was an action being taken, Mr. Orozco, when I sent in the letter of appeal, at that time, I, I had some information, new evidence that was going to be presented to the board, okay? I didn't have the full extent of it, because I wasn't fully abreast of all the issues that the board, that the Planning Department was going to bring before you. Once I received their packet on nine seven, I put together what I thought was the relevant evidence and presented that to you today. Most of the evidence that I presented to you today is in the Planning Department's packet. The only new documentation I brought to you, if you look at my exhibits, exhibit one is just a copy of your own ordinance. Exhibit two is the general order, so I mean, that's, I mean, that's statutory, it's just a law that, you know, the board can.
Well, we don't have anything in that packet that shows anything having to do with the Water Quality Control Board, other than the fact that, as far as the Department could be concerned, it wasn't ever filed with them. Now, that's, you know, you have presented a lot of different evidence. Let me ask you specifically about the seller's permit. Was there any application for a seller's permit or a permit granted before September seventh?
For a seller's permit, no.
Okay. That's a violation of the, of the ordinance, correct? In substance?
I would say it's a de minimis violation, yes.
It's a violation, people have been denied for that, I want you to know.
Well, and I, yeah, and I would contend that, you know, you have the right to, you know, on a de minimis, you know, the courts always look at substantive violations and de minimis violations. And so, you know, if this was to go up to Superior Court on appeal, the court's going to look at, you know, what was the substance, what was the basis of the denial for the permit? And I would contend that's a de minimis, that's a de minimis violation of the ordinance, especially when you have nine thousand dollars invested in this, this, this appeal, this petition, this, you know, permitting process.
And what, what is the proof that he had less than a thousand square feet?
Well, the board is contending that he needs to have a permit under your tiered system.
No, I just, the fact about the square footage of his cultivation.
Well, the, the Planning Department has the burden of presenting the evidence.
You have the burden of presenting the evidence on this appeal.
Actually, it's based on your application, and the application says it's forty-eight hundred square feet. It isn't any, I don't care that it says a thousand or they're growing a thousand, they have per application for forty-eight hundred square feet. When code compliance showed up to the property, it was over twelve thousand. So, eh, not buying into that thousand deal. And that is state. We also have our county ordinance, and in order to get to the state, you have to qualify through our county first. So let's start with our county rules, and at, at a thousand square feet, they needed the permit. I don't care what the state says, because we haven't even got that far yet. So you've got some issues there and some holes in that.
I don't believe there's, yeah, I don't believe there's holes in it, because the, the ordinance for the county requires any individual, if I have ten plants growing out there, to get a water permit for a grow that if I choose to grow under a thousand square feet, I don't need.
Your application states otherwise, so that's what we're basing all of our information on, is that application. They have the right to grow up to forty-eight hundred square feet. Are we supposed to go out and look every two weeks to see if they're growing five hundred or forty-eight hundred? No, we're basing our application on the forty-eight hundred. We don't have time to go out and check that property every two weeks. And I had a specific question, if you're done, Tim, I'm not sure.
I'm not done, but go ahead.
No, I'm not going to interrupt, go ahead.
But that's what the ordinance says. It doesn't delineate that you're required to get a tier one, two, or three permit if you have a forty-eight hundred square foot grow.
Our county ordinance says you do have to get the permit.
Right.
You're referencing state. We're here dealing with our county ordinance today, and code compliance based on our county ordinance. We're not here ruling on state violations. We're here ruling on county. So that's where our direction is right now.
Okay, well, my position, it's an unlawful requirement of Mr. Orozco.
It's not unlawful when our county requires it, and without our county permit being issued, you can't get the state permit that's going to be required in two thousand and eighteen. So, starting here, starting in our county, this is where you need your permit. Then you go to the state. So the state isn't ruling in on this today. Our, our agendized item is on our county code violations.
Okay.
Then I, I'm bothered by your due process approach, where, as I understand it, you say, "Well, Mr. Orozco, English is not his first language, and we should have taken some, the Planning Department should have taken some steps to make sure that there was clear communication." Then you turn around and say, "Well, it's a denial of due process to deal with his family members, because they can communicate with him." Are you saying that they, they're?
No.
I'm not sure what your claim is here. It seems like you're trying to get something from both sides, and it doesn't make sense to me.
No, what my argument is, and my, my position is, is that when you deal with third parties that are not the registrant, how can you say that he received notice, he received these letters, he received all this information regarding these code violations, when you're not making any attempt to talk to the registrant who filed the application? That would be like me talking to Mr. Maurer over here about things you're required to do. Now, Mr. Maurer might.
I'm, I'm trying to deal with your, your language problem claim.
Who filled out the application?
Pardon me?
Who filled out his application?
I don't have any information on who filled out his application.
Anyhow, I'll, I'll withdraw.
But to your point on your language, there's case law in California that talks about if an individual you know has a language barrier. Once again, it's not the burden on the government to make sure that a Spanish-speaking interpreter or the forms are in Spanish. I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is that when a governmental entity is put on notice that an individual may have language difficulties, there, there should be, because due process requirement, some inquiry into whether the individual that you're taking action against or noticing, if some simple, or what the courts say inexpensive accommodation can be made, then that accommodation should be made.
Such as dealing through the family members?
Well, if, if that was conveyed to them, sure, yes, that would, that would have been a fair substitute. But in this case, there's two issues. There's people dealing through family members, but there's no indication that that notice is being conveyed. There was no formal process that kind of, you know, "Hey, everyone's together, can you interpret?"
On the original correction notice, he was there, he was noticed, he knew what was on the list, and he had ten days to get back to and get started and contact the county in code compliance. That didn't happen. So when our county reaches out to a family member, and I will check with code compliance in just a minute, that they reached out to the family member that was present and said, "This is where we want our communication to go through," I think it was upon him to utilize his ten days, if he wanted to keep his registration, to follow through with the county and jump through hoops to get it done, and hoops is probably not a good word to use, but he, he, it was, it was, it was upon him, upon notice, that he had ten days to get back to this county and start some processes. So what, at what point do we give you notice, and then you decide, "Well, you know, it's the county's responsibility to keep getting back to me, I don't have any more responsibility in this." It's really difficult for me, because if the county comes to my property and says, "You've got ten days to start working on this," I am going to be in that county's front door saying, "It's done, here's my photos." There's been no contact, and reading the code compliance emails, they contacted him in January, and then.
His third party, his third party, not him.
Do you speak Spanish?
I do not.
Who are you using to communicate? Are you using the same family members that our county is?
I don't know.
You don't know who you're using to communicate with your client?
Well, I, I'm using an interpreter. I have an interpreter in my office, so, I mean, you know.
Okay, and you're not using the family members?
I don't know what relation they have to Mr. Orozco.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, but I will say, I think you're misstating what the notice requirement was. If you look at attachment A on the Planning Department's packet, all it says is start within ten days. You're saying he must have been completed in ten days. That's what not the notice to Mr. Orozco says. It says, "Start within ten days."
Okay, start within ten days, and the next notice was in March.
With no evidence that he received it.
No evidence that he received it? He wasn't there the day that he was given this notice?
No, I believe the notice, well, he was there on January when he would receive the notice, but that was the only face-to-face. Any subsequent notice.
That is the original contact. That is the original contact, that's the original written notice to, to start working towards getting into compliance. And here's the thing, the deadline was June 30th, not January of 2017, it was back June 30th, 2016. And I've had this argument multiple times with people, why does our county have to come out in January, six months after the deadline? It is your client's responsibility, when they apply for this registration, to get into compliance. It's not our county's job to put them in compliance, it's their responsibility. So, we, six months after the fact, go out and still find violations, I mean, then they're given an opportunity to correct it, and they ignore the county, or they don't respond, and then they get noticed in March, again, two months later, or six weeks later, and still no activity. At what point does this responsibility fall on your client? I would say as of June 30th, according to the ordinance, not January.
Well, you're assuming he received all those notices, those things all went out-
Okay, prove to me he didn't.
I'm just saying-
The burden of proof's on you, not us.
You're assuming he received those notices.
I'm going to talk to code compliance, if you don't mind, I'd like to question them on this.
Yeah, that's fine.
That might clear up some things for us.
Any other questions while I'm up here?
I think, I think that there will be more questions, if you want to-
Okay.
Do the code compliance.
And, and just getting back to your point, all the exhibits except for exhibit eight, which is the picture of corrected code violations, and the copies of the statutes were already in the planning department's packet. So, you indicated to me you had a concern about me not presenting the evidence, it was already in the planning department's packet. The only one that wasn't, was that corrected code violation, so.
And what was the date on that, for site, for the eight, the exhibit eight? What date did that picture get submitted?
I believe we took that in preparation for this hearing, so recently.
So, this wasn't done in Jan, between January and March?
No, it was a recent photo, we just took it in preparation-
And your client clearly understood they were being denied, and they needed to file an appeal. How did that happen? We have a communication error, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure, how your client knew they were being denied if they didn't understand the paperwork?
I was advised by, and I don't know if it was a family member or-
Yeah, somebody understood everything that was going on. Okay, I'll speak to code compliance now.
Well, I, I'm not saying that, that, that's not my point, I was contacted by an individual that indicated that they received some type of documentation indicating that this hearing was going to happen, and that an appeal needed to be filed, and so that's when I appeared. So, I mean, that's not, you know, saying that everything else was received, it was, whatever notice that was, that's what I was contacted about.
And while, and while you're stepping aside for a moment, I just want to point out that on the correction list-
Right.
That it does say start within 10 days, but at the bottom it says, please contact the issuing code compliance officer as soon as these corrections have been completed. Now, that's in English, but this presumably, he has the obligation to take it to somebody that understands English, and it was his obligation to contact the code compliance officer, which as I understand it, he did not. Anyhow, we'll, we'll get back.
Great, all right, thank you for that.
Madam Chairperson, could I ask some questions now of Mr. Taman?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Sorry, Mrs. Moat, we'll get to you shortly.
Okay. It's agreed that your client, Mr. Orozco, did get the correction list?
That's correct.
Correct, okay. And who is Alma Orozco, is that his daughter?
I don't know the relation to Mr. Orozco, I believe it's a family member, yeah.
Okay, well, I think we heard information that there was a daughter living on the premises.
And a son.
And a son living on the premises, do you have any information about that?
I do not.
Okay. After the correction list, which is, I think, the 14th of January, the next thing that I see is an email from an Alma Orozco, sent to Carolyn Moat, permit for address 2028 Sulky Court, and it looks like she sent some pictures. Have you seen that?
I have, yes.
Okay, would you infer from that, like I would, that Alma Orozco had been authorized by your client to act on his behalf and dealing with code compliance because she sent the pictures?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that she had authority to act on his behalf, I believe on that issue, she, he, she had authority to act on his behalf, but I don't believe she had, you know, authority to act on any other issues or behalf. You know, she responded by, Mr. Orozco doesn't have any email to computer, he's, you know, not tech savvy, so, Ms. Oro, or Alma, I assume, provided the pictures in the email, so-
Mr. Taman, I am so sorry to interrupt you, our audio is not working, and we need to take a quick break and get that corrected, is that okay with you, that we do that?
Well, it's absolutely okay.
I'm so sorry to do that to you, I apologize. So, we're going to take just a 10-minute break and let her get that corrected over there. Thank you.
Are we back on record?
I think we're back on record and ready to roll.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we, we were with Mr. Commissioner Wooster and you in discussion.
Yes, let me, let me continue here. Carolyn Moat's email of March 20, 2017, refers to speaking to the registrant's son, and also emailing the daughter. Do you have any reason to believe that the daughter is not Alma?
Uh, no, I, I believe that daughter is Alma, I clarified that point up.
Okay, and judging from the email that Alma sent on January 30th, do you have any reason to believe that she is not fluent in English?
Well, it, it, I mean, I've never met Alma, but, I mean, you know, if you assume that she's the one communicating in this email, then, you know, I'd say she's probably as fluent in English, if that's her in fact communicating, so.
Okay, now, the fact that Alma sent this email on January 30th, after Mr. Orozco received the correction list on January 14th, would that lead you to conclude that Mr. Orozco communicated with Alma regarding this entire matter, and that's why she sent the email?
And which one are you specifically referring to?
Well, the correction list is the 14th, correct?
Uh, correct.
Okay, and the next thing we have is an email from Alma on January 30th. Would that not lead you to conclude that Mr. Orozco communicated with Alma, and that led to her email of January 30?
Okay, so the January 30 email's the one you're referring to, correct? Okay, I see it right here. Yeah, I assume on those points, that there, since she's responding to some of the exhibits in the cultivation site inspection correction list, yes, I would assume that there was some communication between Mr. Orozco, at least as it pertains to those issues, that resulted in that email being sent.
Okay, now, do you think it's reasonable for code compliance to assume, from the fact that Alma sent the email, that she had at least apparent authority to act on Mr. Orozco's behalf in this matter?
I would have liked to see that in an email communication with the planning department, with Ms. Alma Orozco. So, it's some communication that indicated, are you communicating with your, I believe it's a father, do you have authority and act on his behalf? Just a simple exchange like that could have answered the question, that, is this just a one-time thing? Maybe you visited your father one time, he says, hey, can you email back the, the county or, or, you know, I mean, this is all hypothetical and speculation, so, I mean, on individual emails, obviously there's been communication, or some information conveyed, or found out by Alma to respond to these issues. It could have derived from this 1/24/17 letter, because those pictures were sent literally six days later on January 30th. And so, yeah, there was some communication. But for subsequent notices, ones that were given, I believe in March or May of that year, you know, I would, I would say that that would be speculative, that Alma had authority to act or respond. Now, you know, the planning department had ongoing communications in the early part of this case, I don't fault them for reaching out to Alma to communicate with her, but in none of the emails do I say, hey, can you have your father contact our office? Can you have your father call me at this number? Can you have your father come down to the planning department, so we talk to him? So, to, instead of trying to mediate this through a third party, you know, I would have liked to see, you know, the county try to obtain Mr. Orozco in person, either, you know, to come down to the planning department for a, a meeting, or, or can he communicate, or do you have a third authority to act on his behalf? So, some just communication that's, if, you know, if she would have said, yeah, I have authority to speak for him, and then they reached out to Alma multiple times, then, you know, I think the county did what needed to be done, as far as trying to, you know, get Mr. Orozco, if she had that authority, but we, we just don't know that. I know she had these early communications, but any subsequent notices to her, without trying to at least get to Mr. Orozco, I think, you know, wasn't optimal in trying to, to reach Mr. Os, Orozco, who is the registrant, he is the person responsible for the, the petition and getting the work done. So, hopefully that answers your question.
Well, it wasn't months later, or weeks later, it was the very next day, January 31, that Ms. Moat sent an email to, to Alma, and it's not a question of whether she had authority to speak for him. Apparently, nobody responded to any of these emails on the Orozco side of things. The question is whether the code compliance people reasonably thought that Alma was a, was a person authorized to receive communications, from the fact she sent one. Do you have any information that Alma or anybody else ever communicated with code compliance to the effect that Alma did not have authority to receive communications on behalf of Mr. Orozco?
I, I have not seen any communication where it indicated she indeed either had or didn't have authority to act on Mr. Orozco's behalf.
Well, I just, I would be very concerned as to how code compliance got Alma's email. She had to have given it to code compliance, they couldn't have just found that laying on the ground anywhere. And so, obviously, they were given that email as a means and form of communication, so, that, I'm kind of having an issue with. They had to have provided that to the county, we didn't make it up out of nowhere. So, that was a form of communication that was provided to us. The, the notice that was served to the registrant should have been enough for him to want to make sure he stayed on top of that notice of corrections. That's, that's, that's a big deal. So, is there any further commissioner questions?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Do you have any reason to believe that Alma did not get the emails of January 31 and March 14th of 2017?
I have no information that she did not receive this.
Okay, now, on the, on the unpermitted trailer, when was that removed?
I believe fairly recently.
And what about the accessory structure?
All removed fairly recently.
With respect to the water board, the, the inspection report indicates that there was over 12,000 square feet of canopy there, do you have any reason to dispute that?
Well, I believe that's indicative of the permit that he applied for was the 12,000 square feet. I don't believe that was the, the size of this cultivation area.
No, the permit was 4,800, that's what he applied for, and the report shows over 12,000 square feet of canopy. Do you have any reason to dispute those figures?
Not at this time, because, yeah, I, I don't, I didn't have, don't have that information, didn't have that information, so no, I don't have any reason.
Okay, when he submitted his NOI to the water board on June 30th, 2016, did he submit the appropriate checks?
I believe so, but that's where the confusion is with the state of California, they've got two checks, an Arturo Orozco's name, they just, one they know about, one they, I believe they said they received, but they don't have it credited to any account, so theirs could, at least in our communications with the state. So, there's some confusion about, you know, the permit requested through the state of California for Arturo Orozco.
I don't, this isn't a, well, I guess we can't prove that here today, but typically they go by the assessor's parcel number, so by name is kind of weird, but who knows? I'm not going to question that, because we're not there and we don't know what they're, how they're processing.
And the, the state seller's permit, was that acquired September 8th?
Yeah, that was required, acquired recently, correct, yes.
Of this year, 17?
Yes.
And when did he submit the business license application to the county?
Well, the deadline was, at least the one extended by the, the planning department was August 11th, and we inquired on August 11th about obtaining that, that, that permit, so if they would have allowed us to apply, we would have been, I assume, granted that permit on the day, but it was held in abeyance pending the outcome of this hearing.
So, he, he submitted his application of August, on August 11th, 2017?
Correct, but that was the extended deadline that the planning department gave us, as documented in the letter by the planning department.
No, the extended deadline had to do with getting the license granted, did it not?
They just said, let's take a look, business license deadline. Is necessary to complete the business license, it should be done as soon as possible, but no later than August 11th, 2017, so.
That's all the questions I have, at this time.
On the water board documentation, you submitted it separately from this morning's package.
Right, so the second, I would call that exhibit two A, that is a subsequent application that we made recently, because of what we found out with the water board yesterday, about this confusion about the application that was made, the, the checks and where they were, just in the interest of caution, we submitted a new application, just to make sure all bases are covered. But our legal position is that he's not required to get that tier one permit, and I've already stated my arguments, and the board may be in disagreement with those arguments, so I won't restate them now, but in the interest of caution, we just submitted a new application, just so if the board was to grant our appeal, that he can continue on either under his old application, if they get the money and the, the APN number straightened out, or on the new application, which the state indicated that they would grant, but they were waiting for the outcome of this hearing to, to make that decision.
I'm a little confused about the two different forms.
Okay.
The one that was dated last year shows Arturo Orozco as the landowner and the cultivator, and it shows the landowner's address on Sulky Court in Coporopolis. This new one you just did shows the landowner as Dennis Taylor, Signal Hill Trail in Coporopolis.
Yeah, I believe there was a change, yeah, there was a change in ownership of the property, so we wanted to make sure that we got-
Those are correct statements, both of them.
Correct.
There's a change in ownership of the property?
I believe so, yeah.
Was that information provided to the county?
We just received that information, so that's-
That's interesting.
So, is Mr. Taylor, has he signed off on this-
On the application?
Well, I mean, that was, yes, he will sign off on that process, yes.
I'd just point out that the, the canopy measurement was part of the inspection report that's in the, in the planning department's package, and that's, it's showing the 4,800 on the application, and then it says 12,318 measured over canopy. So, unless you have something showing that it's less than what the water board needs, I, I, you definitely have the burden of proof on that.
I believe that it, the, whatever cannabis was growing out there was harvested already, so that-
Well, we're not talking, we're talking about when this was happening, of course.
Right, right, but I believe when I read that, it indicated that it was harvested already, that the, the cannabis was harvested, so I don't know where that number would come from. If there's no cannabis out there growing, I don't know how you're going to estimate a canopy of what was grown, because there's no growing, growing plants.
We will ask code compliance.
Yeah. Any other questions? Did that, Mr. Bakely, did I answer your question as we're starting to come? Okay.
Well, typically, we can go with canopy area by the area that's graded and fenced, so, I mean, that's, you can pretty much tell where the grow area- so, I mean, that's, you can pretty much tell where the grow area was. We can also go back and look at satellite images, and we can also see it through there.
Yeah.
So there is ways to verify that.
Yeah, and I don't have any of that information.
Yeah, I understand. I'm looking at the letter for the, the registration on the business license, and them telling you that, under the application pending status, you're supposed to have the license, and they're telling you that you still need to have the license. They're not, the, the deadline on the ordinance was obviously back in September, that they should've applied, of 16. The, the county's not saying that they're waiving the right that they should've had it, but then when I go back and read this other email, and you had earlier, you were reading this letter of denial of business license, the one dated Friday, August 11, when you were doing your presentation, you had indicated 2000, this office is in receipt of your facts today, August 11. It says 2016, but when you were talking, you said 2017. Is that a wrong date for the year?
What are you referring to, my exhibit, which is...
It's an email that you sent, and it says denial of business license on August 11, 2017. Paul sent it to you? I think that was supposed to be 2017, right? It's not going to change anything.
Okay.
I, I believe that's right.
Yeah, because when you had read it, I was like, well, you're saying 2017, the email said 16. Okay.
Yeah, if I misspoke, I apologize.
No, it's fine, it probably should, it was supposed to be 2017, I, I believe, from reading the rest of the letter. Okay, does anybody else have any further questions?
No.
Can we go to public comment at this time?
Sure, absolutely.
Oh, we were going to code compliance, thank you. You almost got me off track. Good job.
I didn't mean to do that. I know I'm a lawyer, but...
There you go.
That wasn't the intent.
I had questions, didn't I? Good morning, again.
Good morning, again.
So, you've heard a lot of the testimony and the things that we've had questions about this morning. Did, how did you get the email to communicate with this family?
So when I went out on the 24th and met with Arturo Orozco, he was the only one from the family there at that time. I left with him, I left the correction list, and I left him my business card with my email on it. A couple days after that, a man called who identified himself as Arturo's son.
Okay.
And I spoke to him and gave him the same information that I had given to Arturo in the correction list, because he explained that Arturo spoke limited English. And he said, okay, we're going to talk about what we're going to do with that structure. My dad spent a lot of time and money on it, so we'll figure it out and we'll get back to you. The next thing I got was an email from Alma.
Okay.
So she emailed me, I'm guessing as a result of my business card being left with Arturo.
Okay, so they were providing a form of communication to you, we didn't just make it up?
Right.
Okay. The next question I have is, when you met with the registrant, did he seem to understand what you were explaining to him on the correction notice? Do you think there was a communication breakdown at all?
He seemed to understand, he, it did seem that, that his English in responding to me was limited.
Okay.
He searched for words, but we were able to communicate.
Okay. There was another question.
While she's thinking of another question, the canopy measurement on this inspection report, how, how did you read that, reach that figure?
We went out and physically measured it. Mr. Orozco showed us the areas that he grew in, it included a hoop house structure and the partially fenced garden, and so we physically measured that.
So with his, with his guidance, you, you measured where it had been?
Yes.
Before it was harvested? And, going back to your statement earlier about the, they mentioned that, that the son was living there and the daughter was living there. Can you expand on that a little bit? Do we have any indication if they'd been living there for more than 14 days, or...
It certainly appeared that it had been continuous occupation. In the accessory bedroom, there was a closet full of clothes, there was a TV, the air conditioner, there were all kinds of personal belongings in the room. The, the trailer was in the same condition, there were all kinds of personal belongings in the trailer, the refrigerator was hooked up to power.
And, and do I understand correctly that, that whoever you were talking with at that point?
Mr. Orozco.
Said that they, they were living there?
That his son, that his son was living in the trailer and his daughter was living in it, yes.
Living, okay. That, that word, it was not something that you, you reached because of an assumption, because it looked as if they were living there, somebody said they, Mr. Orozco said they were living there. Thank you.
So, the only other question I have is that I was a bit confused, because when I read the emails that were submitted with this packet, it's like Alma replied, but I don't see any other comments on the reply. Am I missing something there?
I was going to point that out.
Okay, so...
At least.
You know, when I went back and looked, I only came up with the, the email that she sent with the two pictures, and no, and no verbiage, and then...
Okay, so she was sending you photo attachments in those emails?
She, yes.
Got it, makes more sense. Okay, thank you. That brings more clarity to me. Is there any other questions?
Yes, one. Can you give us your opinion based on the condition of the accessory structure and the trailer, and the things that were in it? Anything else that you observed? What do you can say, in your judgment, people had been living there for more than 14 days in a row?
I, I can't say that with a certainty. The fact that it was, there are water lines hooked up to it, the electrical was hooked up to it, it was plugged in, the refrigerator was hooked up, everything indicates to me it was currently being lived in, but I did not go out there and verify that 14 days in a row.
Did, did anybody from the Orozco family indicate to you how long all of this had been in place? The water lines, the electrical, the accessory structure?
No.
What was the, the general state of, of wear and tear on the deck, say, and such? It looked as if it'd been used continuously for quite a while?
Yeah, and it had been there for quite a while, it was water stained, and it was semi-finished, in, like, the garbage can, and I keep going back to the refrigerator and, and everything being plugged in, because I wouldn't leave things plugged in if I wasn't using them and paying those bills. That's kind of the indication to me.
Thank you.
And there was only one trip you made out there, and that's on the 24th?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, now, I think I would like to go to public comment, if anybody has anything they would like to comment on this item. Seeing that there is no public comment on this one, then we will bring it back for any rebuttal you may have.
Yes, hopefully avoiding being redundant here.
Avoid being what?
Redundant.
Oh, no redundancy.
No redundancy, huh? That'll, that'll get me out the door. Mr. Timman asked for remanding based upon new evidence. At the same time, he says all the evidence that's, that he's discussing came out of the planning department files, with the exception of one thing, and that is the photo, the supposed proof of correction, in terms of removing the accessory structure and the trailer, if I'm correct. And I would like you to look at that photograph, it's on the, it's on the last page of this document. And, that, we are being told is the former site of what you see on the screen right there, the accessory structure and the trailer. I, I'm having a hard time reconciling that, and short of a trip to actually physically inspect this parcel for proof of correction, I, I would argue that this is no proof at all, that the correction's requested in terms of removing the accessory structure and abandoning the occupancy of the trailer is presented here as proof. Just an observation. I'd like you to look closely at the photograph they presented, and see if you can reconcile that with the photographs you see on the screen up there.
Are you, are you specifically referring to the slope of the land?
The slope of the land, you'll see in the photograph also, there is a trailer, you know, a flatbed trailer right there. Did that just get pulled up where the old trailer was at? I don't know. And, and the trees, the location of the trees, the gate, you see in the photograph on the lower right, you see the white fence. In the background, you also see in that photograph another structure. Again, I'm having a hard time reconciling this as proof. It doesn't, it, in my mind, I don't see anything here. Again, short of a visit to the site, that this is actual proof of compliance, of final compliance, and if that, it is a good seven months after the fact. So, well...
If you want to, if we're ready to move on from that, I have a question about the water board.
The water board, we, we will get to the water.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. As far as camping and occupancy on the site, you know, the 14 days and the 30 days cumulative, if you look at the photograph in the upper left, look at the accessory structure, look at the state of the plywood, you can see that's stained, that's water stained, that's weathered plywood. That, that structure was built quite some time ago, I would suggest. At the same time, you can look at the relationship between that accessory structure and the trailer itself. Obviously, there is a relationship between them. What came first? What came later? I can't tell you. But honestly, I, you know, on that alone, I, I could certainly make the call that somebody's been living in that trailer for at least 14 days consecutively, and 30, and 30, and 30 days within the past year. And add to that, again, as code suggested, you know, the air conditioners, the refrigerator, and especially the crib, some, you know, the child living in that crib can't get, get up and run out of there if there's a fire, and this is the reason why we are required to have these structures permitted.
Additionally, the air conditioners were, were in the building, this inspection was done in the wintertime, so it appears that someone was in there in the summertime, so it's likely that those air conditioners were being used by an occupant during the summer, and here we are in January, and there's still someone living in there.
Thank you. In regards to the Water Quality Control Board, the application, the basic requirement for the application, there's, and really, no doubt that the appellant was required to file with the Water Quality Control Board. The registration is for 4,800 square feet, as you've said, and they've grown well over 12,000 square feet out there. I think there was some question about a separate application. I'm working from my memory here, but I believe this appellant had made another application for cannabis cultivation registration with our office. And I believe that one was denied. On this one, I think there was some question about whether the property recently sold or there being another owner. The, the deed that was provided with the registration shows that Mr. Orozco bought this property in 2010 from a Dennis Taylor. So it looks to me that this property's been in his possession since then.
Have you been notified of a new owner recently?
Pardon?
Have you been notified of a new landowner or lessee recently?
No, if he's sold the property, we have not been notified as such, okay.
And it's a 72-hour requirement for that, correct?
That is correct, sure. That is absolutely correct. In regards to, so, it, he did make another application, there could've been some confusion, it sounds like there was some confusion up at the state. However, considering that, we contacted the Water Quality Board a number of times to verify that on this APN, the NOI had not been filed, and that was done prior to the denial. If you read the denial letter, you can see whoever wrote that denial letter, and I don't know who that was, but they actually state that they contacted the Water Quality Control Board and verified at that time, at the time of denial, that the NOI had not been submitted. Additionally, my emails to both Mr., to Griffiths and Michael Palmer there, verified the fact that on this APN, there is no record.
And if, if it hadn't, if there hadn't been a payment, they would still have a record of the application?
I would think so, however, if you look at the NOI that is in your package, in the staff report, you'll see that that NOI doesn't have an APN on it. So that's the NOI that he submitted to our office. I don't know what he submitted to the state, if anything. Taking Mr. Timman's comments on face value, it sounds that, like, that may have occurred, I don't know. And again, Mr. Timman, the appeal letter was dated August 9. There was certainly plenty of time to resolve these issues, to contact the water board beginning then. He knew what the complaint was, he knew that he had this Water Quality Control Board With regards to the business license, I think, I think Lisa called this right. A month ago or so, we did contact all of the applicants and ask them to come in and complete their business license application. That was not an extension of the September 7 deadline requirement. The appellant was required to meet that, and they simply did not. Due process, I think I'll leave that alone, unless you have something to say about it. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to...
On the business license now, what was the, my understanding is that none of these business licenses are being issued until, what, until the permit is granted?
I can weigh in on that. The, the application for business license was what we required to meet the compliance of the September 7 deadline. We came to the conclusion early on that we were not going to be able to complete processing all of the applications, and we decided we weren't going to issue the business license until we approved it. We didn't want to have this conflict between an unapproved registration and a business license that would be, could be used to say, hey, you should be a business license, therefore I, you know, but because of the length of time necessary, we, we did require that everyone submit their business license application. So it was, they went to the treasurer task collector, took out the application. Many of them went to the assessor's office, which is typically the next step, then they brought it to us, and we put it in the file and held on to it. Because of a variety of reasons, we decided it was important that they actually, we actually issued a license, because they were, those who were cultivating under the permit, or the registration pending status, were operating consistent with the code, and so they were legally cultivating. So we, we decided it was important to conclude the business license process. There was also one cultivator that indicated that they needed to present that to an agency at the state to get a seller's permit or something, so it was, okay, let's, let's issue all of these licenses for all of the outstanding ones, you know, and then we would rescind the business license if we end up denying those. So everyone that hadn't already been denied were issued a letter. This one apparently was like a cross, you know, cross paths about the same time we're denying it, the letters. I, I'm not sure why he was notified, because he'd already been denied, but probably just, you know, everything that was still in process at that point in time. But it was not an extension of the September 7 deadline, it was a notification that you need to come back in and complete the business license process, get it signed off by the planning department, go to the building department to ensure that there weren't any outstanding code violations for, you know, building permits and those kinds of things, and then...
And then, you know, pay for the license and get it issued. So that was the only purpose of that letter, was to tell the cultivators that we're going to now issue the licenses, even though we hadn't finally approved the registration.
But in this case, Paul, as I understand it, there was no application on file, correct?
No, there was nothing-
As of the time of this letter?
That's correct.
No, there was nothing for him to pick up, you know, when he came to the county. And again, we, we said, we're not even going to go through this because at this point, the denial had been issued. We were awaiting this appeal hearing. There was really no reason to run him through the business license process pending the outcome of this hearing.
I did want to weigh in just briefly on the due process issues that were raised. And that's just to point out to the general framework within which the code officer was Registration can't issue if there's existing building code violations on the property. Her job is to go out, ascertain whether or not they are. Under the direction of the planning director, code enforcement officers would routinely give applicants an opportunity to correct existing code violations that were found there. So the, all she was doing was pointing out, look, we can't issue a registration until such time as these are corrected. And she gave him ample opportunity to do so. The burden was on the applicant, not on her, to reach out and continually try to communicate with this person in order to force them to provide evidence of correction. That was entirely incumbent upon the applicant and anyone working with the applicant to do that. So there, there's clearly no due process violation here. It was, she apprised him of the errors or the noncompliance issues on the property, and he failed to provide proof of correction. That's all that happened.
One question, Mr. Grow. Do you have any information whether there is a separate application for registration on a different parcel submitted by Mr. Orozco?
There was a separate application on a different parcel, and there, and I'm working from memory here, but on that application, he was not the landowner. He was a, he was a tenant. And that application, working from memory, also has been denied, and it was not appealed.
So we don't have any way of knowing whether the checks that have been said to have been submitted were in connection with that separate application or this one? Is that correct?
Correct. And there, and what Mr. Teeman is saying is there were two checks. So that would kind of go along with the idea of there being two registrations.
I think he said there were two checks for twenty-five hundred dollars apiece.
Correct.
Is twenty-five hundred dollars what you need for, what is it, tier one?
I believe that's a tier two, I think.
Well, in any event, twenty-five hundred is, twenty-five hundred is consistent with one application, correct? It's not five thousand?
I believe that's correct. I think, yes, I believe that's correct.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Teeman, do you have any rebuttal that you would like to make?
First, I'd like to thank you for giving me the time to present our case to you in this matter. And I think we've, you know, covered everything. I believe if you look at, I mean, look at the letter on seven fourteen seventeen, I mean, it's a, I mean, if you received this letter, it says, "Your commercial cannabis cultivat-" It's a very confusing letter to get. And so I've already stated my arguments, and so I'd submit it and just hope that you grant Mr. Orozco his appeal and allow him to continue. Most of the violations were administrative, with the business license and the seller's permit, the doc, you know, the documentary evidence that these code violations are fixed now, and so I'd submit it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Peter, did you have anything that you wanted to summarize on this?
No, I think Paul covered the issues that I had.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Then at this time, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for deliberations. Would we like to start here or there? Where do you want to go?
Okay, I'll start. With respect to the camping or sheltering, particularly given the information that the air conditioning had been hooked up, I think there's enough there to justify the inference, which I would draw that there was camping or sheltering more than fourteen days in a row. It just makes common sense, because people were living there. And the, the travel trailer was there without a permit. That's a violation, and it wasn't removed until recently. So I'm comfortable with that violation. The same thing is true with the accessory structure. It was there, it wasn't removed until recently. And on the issue whether the notices were proper, I think enough is in the record that the applicant, Mr. Orozco, must have authorized his daughter, Alma, to communicate with code compliance, because she did. And it was perfectly reasonable for code compliance to assume from that, that she was an appropriate person to receive communications from code compliance. I see nothing wrong with that procedure at all. It's up to the applicant and his daughter to communicate with each other. It's not up to code compliance to communicate with several people. With respect to the, the water board issues, I think it's clear on this record that the NOI was required. The application was for forty-eight hundred square feet. The actual canopy was over twelve thousand. I don't see any room, for the argument, because there's no support for it, that he wasn't required to submit an NOI, because one is not required if you're cultivating less than a thousand square feet. The information is, he was, and he'd applied for more. With respect to the issue whether he did in fact submit a notice of intent, if he submitted one on June thirtieth of two thousand and sixteen, it didn't have the APN number. Our ordinance requires that he submit a complete application to the water board. And so if there's confusion about whether the checks were paid or whether this application pertained to this parcel, that's the applicant's fault, not the water board's fault and not the county's fault. So I'm prepared to uphold the recommendation of denial, or the denial. On all the grounds, the business license and the seller's permit are way out of time. And there is a, there was a deadline, it wasn't met, period.
Okay. Commissioner Sisk?
Well, I agree with Kelly. And one issue that I'm really stuck on, and I'm not sure why, is the seller's permit. So even if they got a letter stating or misunderstanding that for the business permit they had a extension, seller's permit had to be in by September seventh along with the business, they didn't do it until a whole nother year. Ninety, two thousand and seventeen. So in, I don't need to get past the structures and past other stuff. They didn't do what they were supposed to do in the first place, in the beginning, in the very start. So I'm going to have to agree with Paul and with his recommendation.
I too will agree with it. I do have a question, though, about this business license bid. There was somewhere in here, and I can't find it, I thought there was an email from us, Miss Mote, I think, giving them to August eleventh on the business license.
Actually, that was an email from Paul.
From Paul.
And it wasn't directly from Paul. It was a generic letter that came out of the planning department to all registrants, according to what they were explaining, that they needed to comply with their business licenses. So, but they were already in the denial stage, and so they sent a letter saying they weren't going to issue the license until this appeal was done.
Yeah, so I'm not quite sure. Oh, there it is, thank you. Their testimony is that they went in and were not allowed to submit an application.
Because that was a-
Is that possible? Is that-
Yes.
The request from our office was to all-
Turn your mic on, please.
See?
The request from our office was to all applicants to come in and pick up the previously submitted business license application that was required to be submitted and in our files by September seventh of two thousand and sixteen, to pick that up and complete the business license application process. It did not remove the burden of meeting the September seventh requirement for bringing us the initial business license application. Again, this is a year after the fact that the business license application was due. So he did come in. I would not have been able to give him his business license application because it had never appeared in our file.
You don't think that's inconsistent, to send a letter saying, get in by August eleventh, and at the same time said, tell them that nine sixteen was your deadline? I, to me, is inconsistent.
Commissioner Vitale, the letter says to come in and complete the business license application processing.
It also says to pick up your business license application to complete its process.
Right, that's because they had to have previously submit it to us.
Why wouldn't you send that letter if your position is that you've already missed the deadline nine months earlier? I don't understand that.
Because we have some five or six hundred applications, and we just sent this generic letter out to everyone that still had not been final determination. You know, I would agree that sending this letter out to Mr. Orozco was probably inappropriate because he'd already been denied. It shouldn't have gone to him. When the staff sent it out, you know, there, we just sort of went and did a computer run of all the pending applications, that we're still, had not had a final determination. And because this was in appeal, the denial was still, was stayed until the conclusion of the appeal process.
Anyway, I am going to agree with denying their application. It's just that one item I have a problem with. And I see there's a couple of other things that we found out about now. The twelve thousand square feet hasn't been cited. She's way over the limit, and this new ownership hasn't given you a notification. If in fact it's a new ownership, that's really confusing to me as to whether this tailor person actually owns it or not.
Today is the first we have heard of that.
Yeah, I'm sure.
We could not act on that.
So-
I'll put in my two cents worth, which is just to say that I think Commissioner Rooster has done a magnificent job of summarizing the matter, and I would only bollocks it up if I'd make any comments, so I'm with you.
So my question is that since we've just gotten notification that the property exchanged hands and it did not get noticed to the county, should that be added to the resolution? Or because they weren't properly noticed fourteen days ago, that that was part of this, that we should not be doing that?
I don't know that it's necessary. Again, we don't have any verification of that, that actually occurred. They, you know, are supposed to do that, and I think that if it were a, still a pending application, or one had already been issued and they didn't do it, that would be grounds for revocation or rescission of the approval. But I don't think it's necessary, given the other, other grounds. In many cases, we have denied an application, you know, and then either through the appeal process or, or, you know, later on, we find the, oh, there's additional, it's been denied.
Right, okay. Okay, well, then I think we are ready to accept a recommendation.
Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Resolution two zero one seven dash zero six five, denying appeal two zero one six dash nine zero zero, thereby upholding the planning director's determination to deny application two zero one six dash nine zero zero.
Thank you.
So, Moon.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five oh. You want to read the appeal?
This action is final unless appealed to the board of supervisors within fifteen calendar days. I should point out that the, any appeal needs to be received by the county within that fifteen calendar days.
Okay, thank you. So I have a question for all of you before we start this next hearing. Do you want to potentially take an early lunch and then come back, and that way we can get through the whole thing? Or do you want to go through this and break in the middle of it?
At least get started.
Okay, you got it. I keep going from hot, cold, hot, cold.
It isn't just you.
Well, no, it's not just me. It's that air keeps coming over the top of us. Okay, so we're going to go to item number two in our public hearings for Appeal two zero one six dash four six one, and it looks like Madeline is going to be our presenter on this.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Adrian Lambie from the law firm Archer Norris. I'm here on behalf of the appellant. I'd like to introduce my client. This is Mr. Mendoza, the appellant.
Good afternoon, good, well, good morning still, aren't we? Okay, all right. Well, you can have a seat. We're going to give Madeline her fifteen minutes, then we'll turn over to you for yours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madeline Flandreau, Planner Two. Today I'm presenting Appeal two zero one six dash four six one for Mr. John Mendoza of S J H M Association. On June twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen, Mr. Mendoza applied for twenty thousand square feet of mixed light cultivation for a cultivation site located at two seven four nine Horseshoe Road in Copperopolis. This is APN zero five four dash zero zero four dash zero six zero, and it is seventeen point one eight acres. I just wanted to add that there is a registration on the adjacent parcel to the south, which is zero five four dash zero zero four dash zero six one, and this is project number two zero one six dash four six two, also in Mr. Mendoza's name, which, you can see the parcel is just, for four sixty-one is highlighted there with the arrow, and it is just the, thank you. The adjacent parcel to the south right here is for four sixty-two. Mr. Mendoza was denied on July twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen for violation of Calvers County Code, Chapter one seven nine five one six five L, for camping on property in excess of that allowed per seventeen zero four one eight zero. Also, failure to meet the housing standards, there were unpermitted occupancy of trailers on the site. This parcel is not located in the Butte Fire area, and the, they do not have building plans submitted for construction of a home. Also, for failure to comply with other state, federal, and local laws for an unpermitted hoop house on the site. In addition, there are two new issues that we would like to add to this denial. The June first, two thousand and seventeen county aerial imagery depicts grading after May tenth, and an expansion for the purpose of expanding the cultivation area, which is a violation of one seven nine five one six five and seven, as well as a lack of fencing, which is one seven nine five one six five and ten. I wanted to submit a photo that was with the registration paperwork and a copy of their plot plan, which shows the map of the parcel, and this is the location that they're depicting on their plot plan of the cultivation area. This is county aerial imagery from August twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, showing the cultivation area. This is what they were depicting on their plot plan. However, I just wanted to add, there is a second site that is just to the southwest. And from what I understand, just to clarify this, this site was mistakenly located on this parcel for four sixty-one. I believe it is supposed to be the cultivation area for project two zero one six four six two, which is on zero five four, which is supposed to be located- two, which is on zero five four, which is supposed to be located on zero five four zero zero four oh six one down here. But I believe there was an issue as to the location of the property boundary between those parcels. So a compliance inspection was done on January twenty fourth, two thousand fourteen, where the three unpermitted RVs and unpermitted hoop house were observed. There was a ten day correction notice that was issued and signed by, I believe, Mr. Grant Lewis, who is a part of S J H M Association. He's a corporate officer. No permits were applied for. On March twenty ninth, two thousand seventeen, a follow-up inspection was conducted, and there were no changes to the site. This is the June first, two thousand seventeen county aerial imagery, showing that they have now moved the southern cultivation site to the proper parcel. And again, this property line on the aerial imagery, we're not a hundred percent certain that line is supposed to be there. So whether they had that surveyed in there correctly within, you know, meeting their seventy-five foot setbacks, I don't know. But this is the parcel in question. You can see that the cultivation area has indeed been expanded. I'll go back to the original two thousand sixteen imagery. And you can see here, this is the location of the hoop house, and there are three trailers that were still located on the property on- as of June first, two thousand seventeen. We're going to have Officer Moat speak on behalf, just to explain a little bit more on the inspections and the discussions with the registrant and Mr. Lewis, who signed the ten day correction. So if you have any more questions about that, just hold on to it for a minute. And that's my presentation. So if you have any questions for me?
Mrs. Moat, would you like to come up and turn your mic off? Hello?
Hi. So on January twenty fourth, myself and Officer Davis went out and did the inspection on this project. We found the three trailers and the hoop house. When we- when we first went out, we were met by Grant Lewis and John Mendoza. We all introduced ourselves. Grant Lewis was kind of taking the lead and showing us around the property. Mr. Mendoza followed. We went to the two grow sites. We looked at those. We took some measurements. I spoke to Mr. Lewis about the trailer situation on the site and asked him who was living in the trailers or were the trailers being lived in. He said, yeah, the trailers were being occupied until they were in the process of building on the- on the property. So I explained to him at that point that until he had plans submitted, the trailers couldn't be- septic plans and residential plans, the trailers couldn't be occupied, permitted, and lived in. So they needed to be removed or the plans needed to be submitted. And I explained to him that the hoop house needed to be permitted. We went through the inspection. I gave him the correction list. He signed it the entire time Mr. Mendoza was with us. We got back to the office and we discovered, looking at all of the paperwork, that the two grow sites were only supposed to be one. One was supposed to be located on the other parcel. I believe at that time, Miss- Officer Davis contacted Mr. Lewis and spoke to him about that. He said he would make sure that he marked the parcels, figure out where the parcel lines were, mark them, and call us back out for another inspection. He was told then to- not to move any of- any of the grow until he contacted the planning department. It was, I think on the twenty-third, I had a conversation with Mr. Lewis, again, going over the plans for the house that were being drawn up. And we talked about the reinspection for the property and the hoop house plans. And I sent him a follow-up email outlining what had taken place in our discussion. I didn't receive a communication back. Sometime after that, Officer Davis got a phone call from Mr. Lewis saying that he had marked the parcels out and he was ready for a reinspection. Myself and Officer Mineheart went out, and everything was exactly as it had been. The trailers were on the property. The hoop house was still on the property. Nothing had been permitted. The only thing that was different was the other parcel of land had a small area that was cleared, and the two guys that met us at that time were employees. We didn't get names, and they said that they were in the process of moving the grow to that new location. I told them at that time, again, you need to contact planning before you move anything and make sure that this is all clear with them. And that was the last communication I had.
I have a couple of questions that actually stay there because I think it's going to be going back and forth between the two of you. Have you made any observations about this additional grading that the planning department is now?
No.
Okay. And on that subject, what are- what are your- what's your evidence that grading has actually occurred?
The design guidelines for grading permits, I define grading as earth-moving, clearing. There's a number of different terms. So clearly, if you look at the original picture, there was native vegetation and that-
I'm really unclear where- where- what part was disturbed and what way?
I believe these two trees.
So basically, the removal of two trees would constitute grading under the-
Yes, clearing the- the topsoil, the layer of vegetation that's on there, the grasses and stuff like that would constitute grading.
Grasses.
It may not necessitate a grading permit under the grading ordinance. There are standards of what type of permit are required, but it is grading as defined by the grading manual for- under Public Works.
And what notice has the applicant and his attorney been given about this additional-
We sent them a letter some time ago after the original denial letter was sent and subsequent to the appeal having been filed. And we notified them that this is being added to the reasons for denial.
Is that a part of our package? I don't believe so. I know there's a reference by Mr. Lambie that something is- grading is coming up.
Yeah, we're certainly prepared to address that today. Mr. Mauer did invite us with photos, so there's no-
Thank you.
Hold on one second.
No, no, that's very helpful. I won't- I won't go on about notice, et cetera. Thank you. Now, the staff report shows the appellant applicant as John R. Mendoza, S J H M Association, and the landowner as Grant Lewis. And the staff report says that the ten day correction notice was signed by applicant. Now, I understood that to be a reference to Mr. Mendoza. Was that your intention at the time?
Correct, yes, that was my error. I didn't- the signature is not very legible, and I assumed it to be Mr. Mendoza's signature.
It was only- only when we got the declaration from Grant Lewis that the signature became clear that it was-
Yes, that's what-
Well, and technically, the applicant is the corporate entity, S J H M Association, and it's my understanding that both Mr. Lewis and Mr. Mendoza are officers of that. So by signing, you know, that, he was an officer of the corporation.
Is there- who is the designated agent for service of that corporation?
Agent for service of process is Matt Clark, the attorney, but the- in the application filed is a resolution authorizing Mr. Mendoza to sign on behalf of the corporation.
And does that also include Mr. Grant?
No, Mr. Grant signed the resolution authorizing Mr. Mendoza to sign on behalf of the corporation.
Okay, but there's- there is no authorization for Mr. Grant to sign on behalf of it.
That's correct.
Okay. And I want to clarify that your recollection is that Mr. Mendoza was with you and Mr. Grant the entire time that you were discussing these violations on the property on your- the date of your- your initial-
Yes.
Inspection.
Yes.
And was also present when Mr. Grant signed the-
Yes.
Notice of corrections.
Yes.
And that's a very clear recollection on your part?
Yes.
That's all I have for now.
Well, one question. Was Mr. Mendoza in a position to hear all was said between you and Mr. Lewis on the subject of the trailers and hoop house and so forth?
I believe he was. He was fairly close by.
What- what's fairly close by?
There were- there were a group of us. There were two CHP officers, Officer Davis, Mr. Mendoza probably standing twenty feet away when- because I went back to the truck and filled out the paperwork, the correction list, and came back and talked to Mr. Lewis about it. So probably about twenty feet away.
And was he- do you remember? I realize this is hard to do. Do you remember, was he actually performing tasks or was he standing and listening to what was going on or do you remember?
I don't remember. I don't remember. I know that Mr. Lewis, when we came out, started the introductions and was- was giving me the day-by-day rundown of what they had going on and showing me around the property. And Mr. Mendoza was following along.
Thank you.
Do you have any information on the issue of fencing that has been mentioned?
The one parcel that was on the wrong plot was fenced. The fencing was completion- complete. The other parcel, the fencing had been damaged in the storm and needed to be fixed.
And was it fixed?
Not to my knowledge.
But to your knowledge, it might have been fixed?
It- it may have. I didn't get any further communication.
Thank you.
Can you explain the two different grow sites that I see on the parcel or on one?
No, you see correctly, and that's what we saw when we went out there. And it wasn't until we got back to the office that we figured out that the grow site to the left is supposed to be down on the lower parcel.
So that's a violation?
So it was completely in the wrong location, yes.
But they fixed that? They removed it or?
They- they were in the process of moving it when we went out for the second inspection. There were no plants on site.
Your note on the January correction list, apparently on March twenty ninth, seventeen, it says we- it had said to reduce the canopy from twenty-six to twenty.
Correct. When- when I- when we first went out there, I thought that those belonged to the one parcel, and so they were over canopy. When we figured out that that grow was supposed to have been moved, was supposed to be on the other parcel, in my brain I went, okay, they weren't over canopy. They were in the wrong location. Technically, they were still over canopy because those two grows were on the same parcel. But when I went back and added that note, in my head I was thinking, okay, they're moving it to the parcel it belongs on. That's their plan.
But they haven't actually done that yet?
They hadn't actually done that.
So you don't- you don't know whether they reduced the canopy?
Well, and when we went out, again, it was in January, and there were no plants.
No, in March. You went back March twenty ninth? Somebody went on?
Oh, yeah, we went back out in March and- and there were no plants on- in the second part, the second grow, there were plants on the other side.
You signed off on three twenty-nine and said, can it be okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so that's not an issue now?
No.
Another issue, one of these emails-
Just to clarify, it wasn't an issue at that time. Subsequently, additional plants have been added and been based on our aerial imaging from early June of this year. We added that, and that was what we were referring to earlier, where, you know, after looking at those new images, it was like, there's a whole new grow area. They've cleared the- cleared additional area, they removed tree, and they've add- expanded that grow area beyond what was there, certainly on May tenth and certainly last year.
I'm sorry, did I- maybe I didn't copy the forward report? I don't see that.
This- this and that area here is an expansion.
Is that in our packet? No. All right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's not in the staff report, no, because that's new information that I just received a couple of days ago.
So when are- when was the staff report, excuse me, prepared?
We prepare the staff reports three weeks in advance. It goes through review, and they're sent out to you ten days before? Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question about this new cultivation. Was- was this done to meet the setback requirements?
I don't know what it was done for. There was no, you know, other than the cultivation area, the one to the west of- on the west side of the property, which was purportedly believed to be on the lower, the other cultivation site, they were not in violation of the setback or the- so this is an expansion of the existing cultivation area. It's totally unrelated to that one that was supposedly on the other parcel. And there must have been some miscommunication between me and staff because I don't recall when I had noticed this. It was probably at least a month ago, and I thought we were going to be adding this to the staff report, and just in the rush of everything else going on, this was overlooked during the preparation of the staff report. It may be appropriate that we continue this to the next available meeting so we can address that issue more thoroughly. Because I think it's a- I mean, we could certainly, I think there's sufficient grounds for denial without considering that. So probably maybe- I would take that back. Let's not continue. Let's continue to go, which is at this point in time, since it wasn't raised to you in the staff report, it was brought up late, you know, after the original denial, that it's probably inappropriate to bring that up at this point in time. But it, you know, that was internal fault of the planning department to not, you know, communicate that appropriately, so.
Well, that's- that's the grading issue, isn't it?
That's the grade- grading issue and the- and, yeah, the grading issue, yes.
Okay, well, counsel has indicated he's prepared to deal with that.
Okay.
But I have another question on the fencing because the correction list says repair fence damage by weather, but that's on a different parcel. That's on application four sixty-two.
That's on this parcel.
That's on that parcel.
Aren't we just dealing with the application twenty sixteen four sixty-one?
Yes, twenty- that is the parcel we're looking at here. That is- it's probably a little confusing because the APN is- ends with sixty-one, but that's application four sixty-two. We're just dealing with four sixty-one right now. We had two grows on this parcel last year. They believed that the second grow, the one to the west, was on the other parcel until it was pointed out that that's not where the property line is. And I believe that was something they were supposed to do, was verify that property line when Officer Moat went out previously to ensure that that was indeed off the property. I guess they've done that. They didn't report back to county where the property line was, but they chose to move that. That is an issue for a subsequent hearing because that application was denied also for other reasons, and that probably will be coming up in a future appeal. In this case, the- the reasons for denial were listed in the original July twenty-first denial letter for the camping and the housing standards and the failure to comply with other state law. In addition, after this was sent out sometime in- sometime in late July or early August, I noticed, looking at the new aerial imaging, that the cultivation area had been expanded, that grading had occurred to do that. And also, by looking at the image, you can see there's no fence around that new part of the grow. There may be some fencing there now, but there certainly wasn't when that aerial photo was taken. And as we've noted in prior hearings, they're required to fence it, you know, when they submit their application, or certainly when they put the plants in the ground. So it wasn't fenced on, I believe it was June 3rd, when that photograph was taken, that aerial image was taken.
A couple of things on that photograph. Whether or not grading occurred per se, was the expansion itself at that time a violation of the ordinance?
Technically, no. And it's sort of a flaw in the language of the ordinance. I think we clearly intended that, you know, what you were growing on May 10th, or the area that had been graded on May 10th, was what you could continue to grow. Unfortunately, the language doesn't say, you know, expansion of the cultivation area is prohibited. What it says is, you can't grade for the purpose of cultivation. But the use of the term grading is very broad, as used by the county for the purposes. And again, the intent was, you're not supposed to expand the cultivation area. You're not supposed to clear additional land, cause additional erosion potential, and certainly not, you know, again, the purpose of that, if you go back to the purpose statement, and that specific provision, I believe it's M7, that, no, you could grow what you were growing on May 10th and not expand the grow. And clearly, that's what they did here.
So that lower portion, which does appear to have a fence around, is a new?
That is the cultivation for application 2016 462. That's a separate application. We're not dealing with that today.
And it wasn't there in the other picture?
It wasn't there before.
So we're going to deal with it?
And we'll be dealing with that in the future.
And as to this picture, the property lines shown, as I understand it, just are inaccurate.
Well, we don't know that. They are assessors' parcel lines that, in some cases, we've found to be quite inaccurate, and in other cases, they're fairly accurate. They're not a surveyed line. They're not-
So it could well be that both-
It may be off by 5, 10, 20 feet. I think, given the way it lines up with the road and the other parcels, it's probably fairly accurate. It's not going to be off by several hundred feet.
So that at least when we get to the other parcel in the future, there may be a question about setback and all that sort of stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
This is part of Diamond 20, isn't it?
It's one of the 20s. I could never keep them straight. I think it's Diamond 20, yes.
Those were 20 acre parcels. They all got busted up years ago. It's reasonable to think those weren't surveyed, and they would be pegged in the ground. One more question on the fencing, where the correction list says repair fence damaged by weather and puts it under 462. It actually was in 461. Have I got that right?
I think the, no, I think in short, that was about 462. I think that the fencing issue that's being referenced today is a new fencing issue that has come up as a result of what appears to be additional grading, which is a new ground.
That, and Officer Moat, this is a hoop house, yes?
Yes.
It's being used for cultivation, yes?
When we were out there, it had been, there was evidence that it had been used for drying, and it was being used for storing trash and debris. There was a large pile of stuff in it, including stuff for the grow, the netting for drying and soils, and were in that hoop house.
So there was no evidence of growing at that time?
No.
Okay. I think my confusion was, I assumed this hoop house was being used for starting the plants, and that it should have been included in the fenced cultivation area as shown on their plot then.
Got it.
Can we go back through the picture real quick?
So on these, on these plants that are on the parcel that weren't supposed to be there, did they get moved to the top part, or did they get moved to the bottom parcel? Did they get moved to the expansion?
They were harvested.
Oh, they were harvested.
And so there's no movement of plants.
Okay.
You know, anything that's on the lower parcel now is a new cultivation area.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to, I'm sorry, you wanted to say something else?
No.
Well, thank you. Wanted to hear from you, huh? I just, I think for, we've got a little bit of confusion going on here, and for clarity purposes, I think we need to draw back to the resolution and take a look at what the items are that are being documented in here. Because we're starting to talk about things that aren't a part of the resolution, that aren't going to be included, and I think that's causing more confusion. So I'd kind of like to wipe those away from the picture, go back to what's in the resolution, and say, okay, Carolyn documented three trailers that were RVs, that were on the property, that were being used and occupied. That was a problem. They were never permitted. And then we had a hoop house that was never permitted. Those are the documents that I'm seeing into the resolution that we're going to be looking at and discussing today, correct?
Correct.
All of this other movement, all of this other expansion of a garden, and garden being on the wrong parcel, being moved back over, doesn't have any discussion today, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, everybody got that?
Except, they're talking about the, I don't know if Peter's withdrawn it or not, about the expansion of-
He has, because it's not part of this resolution.
It was unclear when it was pointed out that the attorney was ready to deal with it. I'm not, if he's withdrawn it, that's fine.
He said if you wanted to do a continuance, they could add it. If you wanted to continue going forward today and rule on the evidence before us, then that was your two choices. So I guess it's up to you guys right now, if you think that you want to have that extension of the grow added, or if you want to rule on today's resolution. Is that what I'm getting out of this?
I think that if you found, and if Mr. Lambie is prepared to address the issue, and you found that there's additional evidence for denial, you could add that.
Then we need to go to him and see if he's prepared to do that.
We have no objection to that. We had fair notice with respect to the grow expansion, and we're happy to address it today.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay.
The only people who didn't get notice was us.
Did you get that? He's looking at us like, what did he just say? He's saying you got notice, we didn't. Okay.
Are we talking about continuing this?
No, we are not. Not at all.
Good. Thank you.
No, get that out of your head. Clear. Okay. So we're going to go to Mr. Lambie now, if you guys are finished with your questions for Madeline, and let him do a presentation on his 15 minutes there, if that's okay with all of you? Ready? Do you have more questions?
I had one.
Let's go to your one question.
Was there anybody present from the applicant on the March 29th inspection at the site?
I'm sorry, Mr. Worcester. I'm suffering from a cold, and I cannot hear.
I'm going to have Mrs. Moat probably going to be the one to answer that question.
Yeah, two inspections. I'm wondering if anybody from the applicant's side was present on the second inspection.
No, they were not. Is that you?
All right. It's all right with everyone. I'll just plug in my presentation and get started.
Okay. So the only thing that I'm going to ask is, the last time, we really did not get you on the camera, because you stood off and backwards. So wherever you're going to present, I want you to be at a mic and on camera.
I will present from a podium.
Perfect. Thank you. You got our equipment down now?
I think so.
All right. Good morning.
Pleasure to be in front of you again. I appreciate the fact that we've narrowed the issues before the commission to not include those related to the second parcel, which again, is the subject of a separate application. And indeed, that application is likewise pending appeal. So I look forward to discussing those issues with you at a later time. For today, let's focus on the larger northerly parcel. And I want to begin by discussing the matter of notice, because we find ourselves here today through a series of breakdowns in communication. And in order to understand these breakdowns in communication, it's first important to understand that there are two basic activities going on on this parcel. There is Mr. Mendoza's cultivation site, and there's Mr. Lewis, Grant Lewis, is building a home there, or in the process of applying to build a home. So there are two separate uses there, and there are two separate applications. There's the pending cannabis application, and there's also now a pending building permit application. With respect to Mr. Lewis's role in the cultivation, I understand from Ms. Moat's comments to the commission that she met Mr. Lewis on the day of the January inspection, that he showed her around the property, and that she understood him to be, in essence, in charge of the property, which is why I presume she directed her communications to him. I have no quarrel with that, and that is a certainly reasonable conduct on her part. However, it was a misconception. Mr. Lewis is not intimately involved with the growing operations. He is the secretary only of that corporation, at the advice of counsel when the corporation was formed. It was understood by Mr. Mendoza, who's not, has no legal training, that it was advisable at the time to include the landowner in the corporation, as evidenced by the corporate authorization that was alluded to earlier. It was Mr. Mendoza who was authorized to act on behalf of SJHM, not Mr. Lewis. So while Ms. Moat may have formed the impression in good faith that she was communicating, by communicating with Mr. Lewis, she was communicating with the applicant, the reality is that that did not occur. What happened instead is that Mr. Lewis believed the corrections that were sought on the northerly parcel were all contingent on his submittal of house plans, because he indeed was in the process of preparing to build a home on the property. As we've heard earlier with respect to this appeal and the prior one, there is an exception to the county's camping rules for folks who are building a home. You can get a temporary trailer permit, six months, renewable for another six months, which Mr. Lewis believed was what he had to do. That was his takeaway from the conversation with Ms. Moat, and it appears there was not a meeting of the minds between those two. Now, I'd like to point out that the county's code provisions, as they relate to notices of violation for code compliance, are specific about the way notice is supposed to be delivered. Section 8.6.200A says, "A notice of violation and all other notices given under this chapter shall be served on the property owners and the occupants, if known and reasonably identifiable, in accordance with the provisions of Section 8.06.210." If we look at that section, it says, "Whenever notice is required to be given under this code," it would appear to be referring to the entire, the code at this point, "notice shall be served by delivering it personally to the occupant, or by posting a copy of the notice in a conspicuous location on the real property upon which the violation or nuisance exists, and," this is not an or, this is an and, "by mailing it to the occupant by first-class mail, together with a certificate of mailing." Now, when Ms. Moat went to the property in January, as we know, she spoke with Mr. Mendoza and Mr. Lewis. We have no quarrel with that account. However, Mr. Mendoza, as he has submitted in his sworn declaration to this commission, did not hear from Ms. Moat any instruction regarding the removal of the hoop house or the trailers. What he did hear were instructions to relocate the grow on the southerly parcel, so that it was on the appropriate parcel instead of on the mistaken one, and to repair fencing. Both of those things he did promptly. Had he known that there was a requirement to remove those trailers and that hoop house, he would likewise have done that promptly. Think about it. It doesn't make sense, from Mr. Mendoza's perspective, if he was intentionally thumbing his nose at code compliance, to do part of what they asked, but not the rest. This was a simple misunderstanding on the part of Mr. Mendoza, Mr. Lewis, and Ms. Moat. And I have here, again, Mr. Lewis's signature on the site inspection correction list, which alludes to removal of the hoop house, or removal or permitting, I should say, of the hoop house and trailers. Now, here's what Mr. Lewis, believing in good faith that he was doing the right thing, did following that inspection. We know from Ms. Moat's comments earlier that there was an inspection on January 24th. On February 14th, Mr. Lewis obtained a septic permit, which he understood to be a prerequisite for his subsequent building application. On February 20th, he hired an architect, Jill McGovern. Ms. McGovern prepared site plans for the house. Simultaneously, Mr. Lewis spoke with Ms. Moat to report what he was doing, stating that he indeed was progressing towards submitting a building application for his home. On March 29th, there was, as you've heard already, a follow-up inspection. There's no contact at that time between Ms. Moat and any representative of the applicant. On June 26th, Ms. McGovern's plans were complete. They were sent to the engineer. The engineer completed his calculations, and on July 27th, the application for the building permit was submitted. It's now pending. Now, not until July did Mr. Mendoza learn about the issue of the hoop house and the three trailers. He received the notice of violation, and that's how he found out. Now, Mr. Mendoza, needless to say, was surprised. He believed he was acting in compliance with Ms. Moat's request during her January visit, and he was upset that Mr. Lewis had not communicated these issues to him, and that they were now jeopardizing his cultivation operation, in which he had invested considerable capital and recently paid tens of thousands of dollars in taxes on. Mr. Lewis, as set forth in his declaration, believed at the time that he was complying with Ms. Moat's requests, and that by submitting his building permit application, he would be allowed to get temporary six-month permits on the trailers in connection with that submittal. Now, as soon as Mr. Mendoza discovered what was going on, he acted quickly. The hoop house was removed in July. Two of the trailers were removed in July. And I have here photos of the site where the hoop house was formerly located, and the trailers were formerly located. Now, you'll see there's no trailers there at all. That's because after the first two trailers were removed, Mr. Lewis continued to seek approval for the sole remaining trailer. It became clear to him that that would not be issued until his building permit was issued rather than pending. Once that was discovered, the third trailer was removed. There are now no trailers, no hoop houses at this site. So, the bottom line is, as soon as Mr. Mendoza did receive notice of what was going on, he acted quickly, he acted decisively, and he brought the site into compliance. Now, here's another shot showing that this area has been cleared of hoop houses and trailers. Apologize for the poor quality of the photo, but there essentially, this is the area where the hoop house was, and this is the area where the trailers were. They're removed. Now, let's talk about the reconfiguration of the grow site, what staff has termed an expansion. This is the diagram from the application that Mr. Mendoza submitted. You can see this is a gross outline of the property, hand-drawn outline. Here is a dotted outline of the cultivation site that is being proposed. Here is the photo that staff is relying on. Here is the L-shaped grow site. This, again, is the separate grow site on a separate parcel, which we're not addressing today. Now, if we overlay the two, you'll see that actually the quote-unquote "expanded" grow site is within the footprint of what was originally submitted. Now, it is, if we use Google Earth to perform the area calculations on this new grow site, it's just a smidge over 20,000. The total licensure limit for this type of license is 22. We acknowledge that the application materials say alternately 20 and 21,000. If we assume the lower bound of that, yes, correct, it is, sorry, it is 578 feet over, but that is, in essence, a rounding error with respect to a shape like this. So the bottom line is, yes, the shape of the grow site was altered, but it was within the original footprint, and it's under the original, or very nearly under, the original square footage. So, to my client's understanding, this was a compliant modification that brought his actual cultivation square foot- actual cultivation square footage in line with the taxes that he had just paid. Now, the image from Google Earth here that staff has been relying on, it's true, does not show fencing along this kind of northerly leg of the cultivation site. We don't dispute that temporarily, when the site was being reconfigured, that area was not fenced. However, it was only for a brief period of time, and it is and has been for some time now fully fenced. Attempt to demonstrate that here. Here's another view of the site. There's fencing all around the perimeter. So, it is true that there was not fencing at the time that Google Earth image was taken. We don't dispute that, but that was a brief period while the site was being reconfigured. It has since been fully fenced. Now, you've heard from Mr. Maurer that "expansion," quote-unquote, of the grow site is not actually a grounds for denial. It's not a violation of the urgency ordinance. What Mr. Maurer contends is that the grading in connection with an expansion of a grow site is the violation, right? So, that is what this additional violation is essentially hanging its hat on, right? That grading occurred. However, I think it's beyond dispute, both on my side and by staff, that no earthwork was actually done in that area. What staff is contending is that the removal...the removal of vegetation is what constituted grading within the meaning of the ordinance. However, if we look at the county code, there is certainly an exception to a grading permit requirement for site clearing operations, including fuel reduction and fire protection measures that do not substantially change the natural contour of the land and disturb less than one acre of soil. Certainly, we're talking about far less than one acre here, and the...the only activities that were done were the clearing of brush and grass, in essence, on that, again, that northerly portion of the L. Those are activities that would not require a grading permit, per this exception, and I think that reading the urgency ordinance to preclude any even de minimis removal of vegetation in connection with cannabis cultivation is not the intent of the ordinance, and it's not a very reasonable interpretation of the statute, because virtually everybody would find themselves in violation of that provision, if even small amounts of vegetation removal were disallowed. So, in sum, we would submit that the reconfiguration of the grow site on that parcel into an L shape brought it into...brought the total canopy size, basically, in harmony with the taxes that were being paid, and in harmony with the area that was applied for. And as Mr. Maurer himself has said, that was not...that reconfiguration was not in and of itself a violation of any part of the urgency ordinance. So, in closing, I guess, I would borrow from the Catholic doctrine, which speaks in terms of venial sins and mortal sins, right? A mortal sin sentences you to eternal damnation. A venial sin is something that can be forgiven if you repent. Now, staff is suggesting that my client committed the mortal sin of basically flaunting direct instructions from code compliance. That is not what occurred. This was a breakdown in communication that could have been avoided had the relevant notices been served as specified in the county code. And what my client may be guilty of is poor communication with the landowner, but that, I would submit to you, is a venial sin. It is the type of sin that this commission and the department have shown understanding of, particularly where the applicant is repentant, has moved quickly to cure the violations, and as we stand before you today, there are no violations remaining. So, with that, thank you for your time. We hope you will consider this appeal.
Question?
Yes. I have a question. The county code 8.06.200A that you've referred to says, "Whenever any notice is required to be given under this code." We're dealing with a cultivation site inspection correction list. Can you point us to where in the code the...there's a requirement that such a list be given to somebody?
So, if I understand your question correctly, you're looking for a link between this section here, which is cited, and the correction lists that are issued under the cannabis ordinance, in essence?
Right.
Okay. I don't know of any section in the cannabis ordinance, in fact, I know it's not there, that deals with how notice ought to be given under the urgency ordinance. I believe it's silent on that subject. I would submit that because Section 8.6.200A is part of the same county code as the urgency ordinance, that perhaps legally it applies, but I think even more so as a matter of practice, it ought to apply. It's...the folks here who are the stakeholders, right, whose registrations hang in the balance, like Mr. Mendoza, those are the folks who are most strongly motivated to cure and to correct any code violations on the property. They're the ones who have made the huge investment. They're the ones who have the incentive. I think as a matter of practice and policy, notice ought to be sent to those people at all times to avoid situations like this, and to ensure that the person who's most highly motivated to fix these issues, who has the most at stake, receives actual notice.
Mr. Lambie, doesn't really the code go past a policy in that Section 8.06.010 specifically says, "There's a need to establish procedures for administrative enforcement of the Calaveras County Code, including but not limited to Titles of the Dup, De Dup, De Dup, and 17," which is the title we're dealing with here, and states, "As a purpose of the Board of Supervisor, to afford due process of law to any person who is directly affected by administrative action." So, I don't know that you have to fall back on policy in fairness. I think you have the code, the least pointing us to Chapter 17. Then the question would be whether this particular notice is one that's contemplated within that reference to Chapter 17, or would it only be going after people who are totally illegal, non-registered growers?
I appreciate that point, Commissioner. I hate to argue against myself here, but I believe that the section you're referring to is the summary abatement procedures. I think those were enacted in February of this year, and thus would not have been in existence in January. But, I think the point is valid, and had those regulations been in effect, right, Chap, the summary abatement procedures that you alluded to, I believe, I don't have them in front of me in this moment, but I believe they require notice by mail to the applicant as well, similarly to 10. And policy or law, there's good reason for that. It ensures notice to the person who is best situated to address the issue.
Is Mr. Lewis, or was Mr. Lewis also the treasurer of this company?
I don't believe so. I believe he was the secretary.
I can address that if you like. There's two statements of information filed by this corporation, one on November 15, 2016, and one on June 24, 2016. Grant R. Lewis is the chief financial officer. John Mendoza is the secretary, and the chief executive officer was Arturo Carlos Jr. and the first...and the second one, John Mendoza is the chief executive officer. Jonathan W. Callaway is the secretary, and Grant Lewis is, again, the chief financial officer.
I believe I misspoke then. I apologize. I guess he is the CFO and not the secretary.
Now, with respect to this grading, I understand your point, your argument, that a grading permit is not required. But is there a definition of grading that's broader than...that which is required to get a permit?
My understanding of the way the code, the county code defines grading, is that it references the manual, the grading manual. And the grading manual, in turn, speaks in terms of what is required to be permitted and what is exempt from permitting, and that's the exception that I put up on the screen for the commission. I don't know of any other way in which grading is defined.
Well, the section that we're concerned about in the urgency ordinance is 17.95.165 and 7, and it speaks in terms of all grading and earth movement. So, grading has to be a broader term than earth movement, it would seem to me.
Surely.
Okay. And I understand your client's position is he didn't move any earth, correct?
That's correct.
But the question is, did he do grading, however that term is defined, which is something broader than moving earth?
That's exactly right. And my submittal to you would be that using what requires a grading permit and what is exempt as a kind of boundaries of what we're going to consider grading is a fairly logical approach in the absence of other guidance. And if we accept a definition of grading that is broader than that, right, that encompasses de minimis removal of, say, grass, I fear that virtually every cultivation site in this county would be in violation of that, just because of basic land maintenance practices. So, I think this is a reasonable approach to take in defining this term.
But what's prohibited is only additional grading or earth movement for the purpose of establishing or expanding a commercial cannabis cultivation site. So, you can move grass, get rid of grass or brush all you want to get rid of fire danger and so forth, but you can't do it, okay, to put plants on that area, and that's what your client did here.
Why...
Why am I wrong about this?
No, I think your point's well taken, and perhaps the idea that, you know, grass moving outside of a cultivation area wouldn't come within this prohibition is correct. But I maintain that in the process of cultivation, which, as we know, involves life cycles, when there are plants in the ground, when there are not plants in the ground, when, I presume, the grow sites are grown over to some extent, even accepting that narrowing clause, nonetheless, if we prohibit any applicant from removing, say, grass in connection with the operations of their site, I still think that's an overbroad definition that would get us in trouble with any number of applicants.
But that's nobody did. He removed grass and vegetation to move the cultivation site. He put plants on an area where they went before, and to do it, he got rid of some grass and brush, correct?
Absolutely. No quarrel with that. I would point out, though, that the area in which this occurred was within the area that was initially applied for. I think that's a key distinction to bear in mind.
But when you look at the ordinance, they had to be growing in that area on May 10th. It didn't allow for expansion unless it was over the property line, which that garden was not. So, the expansion was not a legal expansion. I don't...you can go into the grass, you can go into the grading all you want. The footprint that he was growing on as of May 10th is the footprint that he was allowed to go forward with, according to the ordinance.
I appreciate that point. I would just say that, again, if that provision were enforced in a literal sense...
It is.
We would have...I think we would have many more denied applications than we currently do. I think that it's been the practice of the department and the commission not to look at the exact footprint of growth as it existed on May 10th. Looking back at some of the applications that have been approved, you know, we look at what was the photographic evidence of cultivation activities prior to May 10th, and frequently, we see, you know, a plant or two, you know, in these photos, and then they've been approved for, you know, significant square footage of canopy. So, I understand that the letter of the urgency ordinance suggests an absolute freeze on footprint as of May 10th. I don't believe that's been the precedent set by the department or the commission in interpreting that language.
Getting back to the time when the code compliance officer was speaking with Mr. Mendoza and with Mr. Grant, wouldn't it be reasonable to...for the code compliance officer to conclude, from the way Mr. Mendoza was treating those conversations, that Mr. Grant could speak for the corporation and also could sign this correction notice, and that apparently it was Mr. Grant that took the lead in showing around the property and all that? And I'm wondering about implied consent by Mr...by the applicant to have the landlord speak for the applicant.
I think you're right. It's reasonable of Ms. Moat to have concluded that Mr. Grant ought to sign the notice. But to let you into the thinking that was going on, at least in my client's mind at the time, there were, in essence, two issues going on. There was the contemplated building of a house, and there was the existence of a cannabis grow site on this parcel and a cannabis grow site on the other parcel. And to Mr. Mendoza's understanding at the time, he needed to take stock of corrections to the cannabis sites, which indeed, with respect to the grow site on the other parcel, he did. He effectuated those. He understood that what was being discussed with respect to Mr...between Ms. Moat and Mr. Lewis with respect to the trailers went to Mr. Lewis's...
I understand that.
Or Mr. Lewis's application for building permit.
I understand your approach, but it just seems to me that the way Mr. Mendoza treated the situation, and then perhaps withdrew 20 feet from the conversation, was to basically give authority to Mr. Grant to deal with whatever was going on that day. Then Mr. Grant, apparently with the best of intentions, blew it and didn't pass on those words to Mr. Mendoza. By the way, as an aside here, I'm glad you're not stressing the fact that Mr. Grant is an aged 64-year-old man when you give the...see the demographics of the members of this committee, the male members.
He's a well-experienced gentleman.
May I just, I'm sorry, in the interest of clearing up the record and for my own clarity, the landowner, it's Grant, Mr. Grant Lewis, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. No, no, it's...I think we've all done it at various points.
Yeah, I think we've called him Mr. Grant and Mr. Lewis interchangeably, but his name's Grant.
All right. Thank you.
And is...how is your client the occupant of this property? I mean, you're relying upon him being the occupant.
Yes. So, the property currently is vacant except for the cannabis cultivation. There is, again, pending house permit, but it's not...ground hasn't been broken on that. Mr. Lewis resides in the peninsula, in the South Bay area. He does not live there. He's present there occasionally in connection with his efforts to build a house, but Mr. Mendoza is the one who's responsible for the only ongoing continuous activity on the parcel.
And was he living in one of the trailers?
I believe he was at the time of the...that January 24th inspection. I believe that's true.
Couple of questions. You said the fencing had been removed, partially removed, for some time. What do you mean by "for some time"?
I don't know the answer to that. I know it was a relatively short period, but I can't put a number on it.
A month, three months, six months, 10 minutes?
I'd be happy to let my client answer that question directly. He's here. Yeah, let's ask him.
It was only several weeks until the...
Several.
It was like less than a month.
Another question. Are you growing right now on this parcel?
Yes.
What did you mean by reconfiguring? I guess I'm talking to Mr. Lambie.
Sure.
No, when they said...
Well, I'll address that. What I mean with respect to reconfiguring is that, as we saw in the early aerial imaging, the garden was a roughly rectangular shape, and now it's been turned into a capital L.
So, you were not talking about that other area being moved?
No.
In the hoop house itself, have...did they grow anything at any time?
I don't believe so, but...
Just storage or whatever. Then why do you have an exhaust pipe attached to it? Looked like it needed air being blown in or out. Looked like it needed air being blown in or out.
Yeah, that was just a drawing.
Drawing, so it was a drawing process.
Maybe this is the same question that Commissioner Vachelli just asked. The, the fencing on the additionally cultivated branch of this, of this grow, you said it was unfenced for a brief period. Was that what you were just discussing with Mr. Vachelli?
That was my understanding of what they were talking about, yes.
And, and so we've got that so that it was less than a month?
That, that's what I understood as well.
Is, is it your position that Mr. Mendoza did not hear the exchange between Ms. Moat and Mr. Lewis regarding the unpermitted trailers and the unpermitted hoop house?
That's correct, yeah.
The, the issue about being able to have a trailer there while you're in the process of getting building plans and so forth, that only gets you one trailer, doesn't it?
That's correct. And that's why initially two trailers were removed, and then the last one was removed as well.
But the two trailers were removed when?
They were removed back in July, back when we, when, when they realized exactly what you just said, that you could only have one in connection with the, the pending building permit.
Was your client growing in pots?
At what, at what time?
Well, at the time that the grading, if I can use that phrase, took place.
I, I don't concur in the use of the phrase, but you're referring to when the, when the garden was reconfigured into the L shape? I don't know. Mr. Mendoza?
Yes, they were growing in pots.
Okay, what? Was there any real necessity to get rid of the grass and the brush in order to put the pots there?
Just for footing.
Just what?
Footing and, you know, because you have to move everything and workers work around that whole area.
Could you come up to the mic? I'm not that good at hearing things.
Just for maintenance as far as footing, you know, with the different reins and everything? And then just, you know, you don't want a fire brush to come up the whole side off the road, you know, and destroy everything you have as well. So it's just more of a maintenance issue. No, not, the, the ground wasn't really disturbed. The pots are lifted and then put onto the ground itself. So the, the grading brought spectrum, you know, wasn't, you know, we didn't do anything like that.
And what equipment did you use?
As far as
Did you use back scrapers?
Well, we, we have workers up there, so we used a lot of shovels and, you know, manpower. That, that whole area is just pure rock. So, you know, unless you have some sort of digger, you know, you can't move any of that. That's just, you know, rock up there.
What sort of digger?
I mean, like for the septic tank for Mr. Grant, he had to get something to crack, you know, that pure rock in there to drop a septic tank. So that's a whole different issue. I'm just saying, you know, it's not like regular dirt.
You know, I think the question is, is focusing on the area where your cultivation was located. And there's this issue of reconfiguration. In, in this reconfiguration process, did you use heavy equipment, shovels? What did you use to, to prepare the land for the new locations of the pots?
Those were just shovels and holes. That, that area is already flat.
Well, you, you could have moved the pots there and planted them without doing any of that, couldn't you?
Yeah, if you wanted, you know, it's just a messy site. You know, you also get mice in there and all kinds of other things. It's just part of nature.
So it's, it's helpful for the process of moving the, moving the cultivation area?
Right, it's just a stream.
And I have a question. I think you were saying that because of flooding, is that, was that the word you were using?
Well, flooding, I mean, it rained all that winter of two thousand seventeen. That was just all inundated. You know, I can't predict how, like, we just had a storm in San Francisco three days ago. That called out the ballgame. So, you know, it's just, you tried to pre-plan for what might happen.
So I don't understand the why this, the change of the outline, the addition of plants, however we can do this without using the word grading.
Expansion.
The expansion. What, what role did flooding play in the preparation of that? And how did you prepare for flooding?
Well, maybe I used the word wrong, flooding. It was just the ground was wet and inundated for months. And then when we thought we'd move, you know, because if you're moving things and grassy in that area, you know, you have people slip. You know, it's a lot of rocks and everything. There's, those pots weigh a lot, you know, instead of getting people hurt. I mean, it's just
So there's enough oil, I mean, enough soil to create mud?
Right.
And there's rock underneath, but there's soil, okay.
Okay, I, I have a question for you before you walk away, if it's okay with, with you that I ask. Is this you in this picture? I'm on the, the picture's submitted. It's one, two, third page. They're not numbered. It says inspection date one twenty-four seventeen, and Mrs. Moat is walking in the picture with a gentleman carrying the measurement tool.
All right, we'll get him to picture it.
It's the last page of our report.
Oh, no, that's Grant. I'm a little taller. He, Grant is like five-four, five-five.
Okay. But you were here on this day that these inspections were being completed on January twenty-fourth with him, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the inspection notice that was signed the day that you were there and present, that Mrs. Moat was there, was dated one twenty-four as well. And on that day, there were three trailers, RVs, with no permits, and there was also a hoop house with no permit. On March twenty-ninth, she came back, there were still three RVs with no permits and a hoop house with no permit. I understand you're saying that you didn't see a copy of this, but you were present the day that inspection was done? And if I was this registered grower that had invested all my dollars into this, I would not have walked away or not asked to see this inspection sheet and correction list. And, I mean, you had a couple of months to clear it up between January and the end of March. These issues weren't dealt with because when she went back, nothing had changed. We can go on and on about the expansion of the garden, but the issues that I'm seeing here, for me, in this resolution, were the trailers. I mean, those are big issues for us in this county because we're looking at a lot of environmental damage to our soils. And where was the septic blowing to? You don't have a septic, there's no permit. These are all issues that are big issues for me. The hoop house, full of garbage, staying there for multiple months, they weren't cleared up. And, I, I mean, you can say he signed this and, and he's not me, he's not the registered grower, he's part of the corporation. He owns the land. He has liability in this as much as the registered grower. I believe proper people were noticed in all of this. I believe you were on site the day the inspections were done. And to claim innocence of, oh, I'd never seen it, when you knew the inspectors were there, I'm not buying it. I just am not buying it. I think that I wouldn't have walked away, and I sure as heck would have asked to see what Mrs. Moat put in writing that day and what I needed to take care of. So I, I think, unless you can tell me that you truly were there and you didn't care what Mrs. Moat had to say and you didn't ask to see that receipt and walked away, I would be quite shocked. I really would.
I think just a couple of points on that subject. He, and Mr. Mendoza can speak to this himself, but he surely cared what Ms. Moat had to say. And that's why when she gave direction with respect to relocation of the, the second site and repair of the fence, those were all done as soon as practicable. It was not a matter of not caring. It was a matter of failing to understand that the, the remainder of Ms. Moat's and Mr. Lewis's conversation was applicable to the grow site rather than to the housing project. And just one other point. There's been a, a perception suggested that nothing was done between January and March with respect to these compliance issues. And, and that's simply not true. As we see from the timeline here, Mr. Lewis was working diligently to get his housing permit submitted. And what Ms. Moat suggested to him, and what it says on that notice, is that he needs to get started within ten days. And he, within ten days, he had the septic permit issued, or sorry, not ten days, within twenty days, he had the septic permit issued. Six days later, he had an architect selected.
That's separate. That's, that's building. That has nothing to do with the grow site. That is him getting a permit to build a house. Two separate issues for me. The violation here is in the urgency ordinance with having three RVs on the property that are unpermitted and a hoop house full of garbage. Two separate issues. So you can talk about building a house, you can talk about getting permits for the septic. That is a whole separate process. That's Mr., is it Grant? Now that I'm getting, Mr. Grant Lewis building a house. That's separate from the urgency ordinance and growing and expanding a garden after May tenth. They're all separate issues. So, and I know you're trying to bring that into it, and you're trying to say to me, he was going through the building department, he was doing this, he was doing that. But we still have this that was written on January twenty-fourth. A re-inspect was done in March, at the end of March twenty-ninth. Nothing changed on this during that two-month time period. I don't know, and, and I go back again, I do it every single appeal. June thirtieth was the deadline to come into compliance with all this, not March of two thousand and seventeen. So how many, how many times do we have to say, why do people wait for code compliance to come? You signed up, you signed an application to comply with the urgency ordinance. You didn't sign an application to say, I need code compliance to come out and tell me how to do my job. Unfortunately, that's what we've had to do through this whole process. So I'm still going to go back to this was not corrected. The resolution for the denial states this was not corrected. There's no excuse for no correction that I have found that is acceptable and legitimate. There's no new information here telling me why this wasn't done.
Just one note on what you said. I agree with you that there are separate issues on this site, right? There's the housing, there's the trailers, there's the grow site. Now, the reason why the housing application is of relevance to the trailers is because, as we touched on already, one of the ways, under the urgency ordinance, in which a, a trailer can receive a temporary permit on the site is in connection with a pending housing application.
One, one, not three.
No, absolutely right. And as soon as that was discovered, it was winnowed down to one. As soon as it was discovered that they would not issue the permit until the building application permit, application permit was actually approved, then the final trailer was removed. So I, look, I
In Ju-, in July?
In July.
This notice was January twenty-fourth. Do we wait seven months to comply? I mean, I, the, the deadline was June thirtieth. You were noticed in January, then in March, we went back and it wasn't, doesn't, wasn't corrected. And then you come in before us to tell us that in July you corrected it. I, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't buy it. I just don't. Does any other commissioners have any other questions?
Maybe this is a question, but there is an email in our package directed to Grant Lewis in February. I haven't heard that one mentioned, but it, it mentions the hoop house permit in that email. So there's another indication to, to the ownership that the hoop house had to be handled and it was July before it was removed. So I, I really find that three or four month vacuum.
Right. I believe that email was pursuant to this call, which occurred right here. It's in our timeline. And again, the issue was that Mr. Mendoza was not privy to these communications as the applicant.
But Mr. Lewis is working on the hoop house permit February twenty-third. July it takes him to get rid of it. I don't understand that.
And again, I think that's illustrative of
Three, four, five, six, five months.
I think your argument should be a lot stronger if Mr. Lewis were just a landowner, happened to be building a house there, and wasn't cut in on, on the urgency ordinance, and, you know, misunderstood what was needed, and then he thought he could solve everything by getting the permit for the house. But he is a part of the corporation, and he presented himself to the code compliance officer as, hi, I'm the guy you deal with here, showing her around, and in fact, that's what that photograph was showing, was showing her around. I, I think there's, there's a lot more to this, to Mr. Grant Lewis's involvement. I noticed Mr. Mendoza's declaration actually calls him Mr. Grant at one point. We all do it. No criticism. But it, it, this relationship is a lot different than just a pure landowner who's building a house.
I, I, I think that point's well taken, and as I said, I understand why Ms. Moat reached the conclusions as she did. And we don't have any quarrel with how she conducted herself at the site. I think that the eventual outcome, which was that notice didn't in fact reach Mr. Mendoza for months, underscores the importance of adhering to a, a notice procedure where the, the actual applicant is, receives written notice.
The actual applicant was present the day of the inspection.
The actual applicant did receive notice. He was an officer of the corporation. The registration is in the name of the corporation. The chief financial officer received the notice. They were notified.
I think one of, one of the problems I'm having is, under the urgency ordinance, the ordinance itself says whether or not there's a dwelling on the parcel to be registered. There shall be no camping or sheltering by the registrant in a vehicle, et cetera, et cetera, beyond a time specified. And then there's another one that says, if I can find it. Says one recreational vehicle can be used as a temporary registration in compliance with these other sections that weren't complied with. Now, that's the ordinance itself. Now, if, if there were no code compliance inspection, and there were no notice to anybody, why isn't it true that your client would still be in violation of this ordinance? Code compliance could have come out and said, you're in violation, and actually said nothing, found out your client was in violation, notified planning and denial. There's no requirement that code compliance gives people these correction lists. But your entire argument seems to hinge on the notion that because there might have been some defect as you see it in how a correction notice was given that wasn't required in the first place, that the registration has to be granted. Do you see my problem?
I do see your problem, and I, I would respond this way. I understand that these, these notices that are issued by code compliance are not required by the urgency ordinance. I do understand that. However, when one undertakes to do something, even if one is not required to do so, right? It ought to be done correctly. And that's, you know, there's examples, there's examples of that throughout the law, like folks who, who give CPR to an accident victim. They're not, they have no requirement to do that, but once they undertake to do it, they need to do it competently. And I think the same concept would apply to these notices. If we're going to give these notices, if we're going to expend county resources, send in code compliance out to allow folks a chance to correct, I think it's only logical and efficient that those notices be distributed in compliance with the county code. I think, again, that's a matter of, of, of policy preference, too. If we're going to expend county resources doing this, we ought to ensure that they have the maximum effectiveness.
But in the situations you're referring to, where somebody undertakes an obligation that they didn't have in the first place, where that gives rise to a, to a problem is when they then conduct themselves in such a way as to put the people involved in a worse position than they were before. Here, here there's no prejudice to your client from a correction notice having been given to Mr. Lewis. He would have been in exactly the same position if there had been no correction notice given to anybody, correct?
I, I mean, I would dispute that because had he received the notice, he would have acted. But I, I, I take your point, which is that the notices weren't required to be given in the first place. And I, I do understand that under the plain language of the urgency ordinance, that's the case. However, it, it's also true that it's been the practice of the department to give these notices consistently. And I think if we look at other land use entitlement applications or, or conditional use permits, generally speaking, it is the practice of almost all land use authorities to afford the applicant at least the applicant at least some opportunity to cure violations. I mean, the bottom line is, our land use codes are voluminous, and oftentimes, these are laypeople attempting to comply with them. And I think in virtually any land use practice, it would be unheard of to find denials with no notice, no opportunity to cure, you're done. And I don't dispute that perhaps under the plain language of the urgency ordinance, that can be done, but I don't think, I don't think that's really an efficient land use practice or fundamentally fair, albeit perhaps allowable.
I don't find it an acceptable practice that the business was put in and wasn't ever permitted or licensed to begin with, and we had to pass an urgency ordinance to deal with this. So I think that we are dealing with a practice that wasn't acceptable to begin with, and we had to take additional steps to secure our county from damage. Now, we gave an urgency ordinance, we let these people try to get into compliance and step it up and do what was right, and they failed to do so even after a code compliance notice, and two months later, it still wasn't done, and then seven months later, it's finally done, only because a denial was coming. I'm sorry, I mean, you have your thought process, I have mine, and I think that we're beating a dead horse unless the commissioners have any new questions. I would like to go to public comment at this time.
Sure.
Bill McManus from the ban committee. After seeing a lot of appeals here at the board of supervisors, there seems to be a recurring theme, and that's that people who have supposedly, by their own admission, invested a lot of time and money in this activity will all of a sudden rely on someone else to tell them if they're doing it right or wrong. Now, I don't know if you handle your funds and investments and things like that, you just put it in someone else's hands, and if it goes south on you, you blame the person for not saving you from yourselves. And so it seems illogical that with all this activity, they wouldn't be hounding code compliance or the planning department. Is everything okay? Have I done everything right? And according to this timeline, trailers were there that shouldn't have been, someone found out about it because they were removed. And to touch on the issue that the chair mentioned, these are exactly the kind of things that are destroying our county. You know, that we have trailers out there, there's no septic. Where's the septic going? Where's the gray water? Where's the black water going? Where's the legal water supply? Where's the legal power supply? You live out there like gypsies or something, and the environment is at risk, and it seems like you always have to have something left on the to-do list. You go down, I mean, granted, the urgency ordinance is troubled, to be kind, but there always seems to be this big list, and a few things get taken care of, which is only an excuse to delay it for another three or four months, until now we've got applications that have been, they've collected one fee, and now are in their second year of growing, and they still have violations. I mean, is that, is that the message we want to send to people? That even our deficient ordinances are not going to be enforced? That this continuous game of leaving one thing undone that gives you another shot at a code compliance officer coming out to your site, that you can claim didn't tell you what to do, and then come back and say, you know, hey, it's not my fault, and I've got a couple hundred thousand dollars invested in this? None of that makes any sense to me. And it's up to the planning commission and the board of supervisors to start getting this thing under control, because the county is being played. Two years of growing with almost no compliance and one application fee. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment? Okay, seeing none, Colleen, did you want to say? We'll bring it back for rebuttal. Do you have anything you would like to?
Actually, I do have a couple of points I'd like to make. You know, a big, a lot of discussion has been on the fact that Mr. Mendoza was not specifically provided this notice. As I said previously, the registrant was the corporation, SJHM Associates or something like that. The person who was handed the notice was the chief financial officer of that corporation. And as Mr. Lambie stated, the applicant should be afforded the opportunity to correct. The applicant, SJHM Corporation, was provided that opportunity. So clearly, there was adequate notice provided. There's been some question about grading. I have the grading manual, design manual for grading, in front of me here, and let me read definition of grading. Grading and grading activities refer to all earth-moving activities, including clearing, grading, excavation, fill placement, and stockpiling of earth and materials, including any combination thereof. So that's the definition of grading under the design manual, which is then referred to in the grading ordinance. And even though a permit may not be required for that grading, the grading activity occurred. There seems to be a mistaken impression by many of the registrants that if you were growing any amount of cannabis, that if you put 22,000 square feet down on your application, you could grow 22,000 square feet. That is simply wrong. And while the code isn't as clear as we would have liked it to be, the intent, as well as the letter of the law, was that we were to freeze cultivation what was there. The board granted the ability of those who had previously graded to continue their operation and sort of fill in that grading area, but they clearly did not intend to allow new grading, new clearing to occur, to expand the cultivation. So I don't know how much was out there, maybe it looked like about 12,000 square feet. That's what he was doing, that's what he was permitted. Now, it's true that there's probably a number of cultivators that have expanded beyond what they had on May 10th. Unfortunately, our ability to check that, to catch that on all the applications, has been very limited because the aerial imaging that we got wasn't until late May or early June of 2016. So I am quite sure that there are people that misrepresented to us how much they had, and the only way we could go back to that was look at the most, you know, the closest aerial imaging that we had. But we have been very consistent where anyone, we can show that anyone has expanded their cultivation after the initial approval process, or the, you know, where we can show after May 10th, or even after the May, late May or early June aerial imaging, those have been denied. So we're very consistent with that approach. And yes, I'm sure there are people that have been able to get away with it, because we don't have the data we need to sort of prove that they did expand. And it's been very difficult, that's been part of the challenge we've had with this whole process, was, you know, the hundreds of applications with some, you know, pretty poor quality photographs tried to somehow demonstrate that there was, you know, 20,000 square feet of cultivation based on a picture of some plant in a garage or something like that. And you've dealt with many of these appeals themselves. So, you know, we've talked about a housing project going on. There was no housing project, there was no permit. The trailers were occupied for the purpose of the cultivation activity. Had there been a building permit going on, or had there been construction going on? Yes, we could argue that there was a housing for that project. There wasn't a project. Everything on this property was associated with the cultivation activity, and the registrant was notified of that. That's all I have, unless you have any questions with me.
Yeah, I have a question as far as the grading goes. If, and I'm looking at N7 again, when it talks of grading required for the, to solve the setback problem, there it says a registrant seeking to conduct grading for this purpose beyond May 10th, 2016 must provide the planning department with a copy of a current grading permit for this proportional adjustment. So at least in that context, solving a setback, it looks as if grading, you have to be doing sufficient grading to require a grading permit, because the applicant has to show the grading permit in order to do his adjustment.
And if they could demonstrate that a permit was not required. There's a couple of levels of permitting for grading. There's a simple exemption. There are, it was called a grading notification, which if it's under a certain threshold, that it's just, you know, it's a lower level review, and then there is the more formal grading permit, we have to have engineered plans and all that. So what we would do in that case is say, okay, you know, we had 1,000 square feet that was in the setback, here is where it's located, and on your site plan that you were supposed to have submitted, you know, before June 30th last year, here's the area where we're going to relocate that, and here's the permit or the statement from the public works department that says we don't need one.
Oh, okay, so it's either or.
Right, right.
Even though the ordinance isn't explicit on that. That's correct. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll take it to you now.
Just a brief response to Mr. Maurer's points. With respect to SJHM being the quote registrant, I wish I had a copy of the registration face page on my PowerPoint, but yeah, certainly, the very first line is who is the registrant, and that is the individual. And then below that, there is-
We have a copy of it here if you need to see it.
It says Jason Mendoza, the president of, that's what it says. Who identifies as president?
Right, so, okay, so, but what I'm saying, I don't know if the commission has it, but the bottom line is, the first line is the individual, and as Ethan pointed out, it does, someone annotated it after the fact, and it says as president of SJHM. But the bottom line is, there is a contact person, there is an individual, an address, a phone number listed front and center in the application, and below that, as Mr. Maurer pointed out, indeed, the corporation is listed. But I think to say, the corporation is the registrant, not the individual, the county may take that position in its handling of these applications, but from the perspective of the person filling out the application, I think it's reasonable to expect that the point of contact will be name listed at the top of the application, the individual, the address, the phone number provided. I think that's a reasonable expectation. And then the second point I would leave you with is that I think it's clear from our discussion today with respect to canopy size, with respect to grading, that the urgency ordinance is less than clear, no doubt, and that indeed, there may be many applicants out there, including some approved ones, who did not comply with a strict letter of the urgency ordinance. There's the issue of what you were growing before May 10th, which, again, the nature of outdoor cannabis cultivation is that through the life cycle of the plants, the square footage changes, the layout changes, that's just a fact of cannabis cultivation. There's also the square footage indicated on the applications, which is kind of another reference point, so in this case, this shape here. And it's certainly easy to understand how this might be, this might lead folks to, while attempting in good faith to comply with the urgency ordinance, to run afoul of the strict letter of the ordinance. And I think that's precisely what appeals processes like these are for, right? For folks who are acting in good faith, are trying to comply, and because of their lack of sophistication, or because of the density of the material that they're supposed to comply with, have run afoul in a technical way. And I think that's exactly what we have here.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr.?
No, I have one question of the planning director, though.
Okay.
Could you read again the definition of grading, please, that you gave us?
Grading and grading activities refer to all earth-moving activities, including clearing, grading, excavation, fill, fill placement, and stockpiling of earth and materials, including any combination thereof.
Okay, so if I'm hearing this and understanding it correctly, it's earth-moving including
Yes.
what follows. So don't you have to have earth-moving? Because you can, if you move earth to clear, I understand that to be grading. I'm having a little trouble hearing this, that if somebody goes out and grabs grass with a shovel and doesn't disturb a cubic inch of dirt, that that's grading. Can you comment on that?
Well, I would agree with you that if someone just weed-eated the grass and maybe cut some brush with loppers or even a chainsaw, that's not grading. But if you're out there with a, you know, a blade scraping it, you know, you're going to go down a couple inches and move some dirt with it.
I think what Mr. Maurer described just now, weed eating, clearing grass, is what occurred in this instance. I don't think there's any contention, even from staff, that someone got a blade out there and scraped the ground or anything like that.
Well, I don't think the grading was the issue for me. I think it was expansion, the expansion.
Can you go back to our picture?
They removed trees.
Sorry?
They removed the tree.
Okay, so are you finished with your rebuttal?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so I'm going to close the hearing at this time, and you were going to have, were you going to have her read something?
I just thought we could bring up the pictures, their aerial imaging that might show a little bit more about what actually, you know, occurred on the site.
Do you all like to see those photos?
You know, was it just shovel work, or was it more than that?
Sure. Okay.
If there is a, it appeared to me, looking at the site, that, you know, it was much more than just simply, you know, shovel work that was done. There is, you know, not a stitch of vegetation on the site. You can see all around where it's, the raw dirt has been, you know, that's clearly been done with mechanical equipment, not hand shovel.
Well, I was assuming since they were moving pots, that you could have it look like that just from the, whatever equipment they used to move the pots, bare the soil.
In the image, you can see that the business completely bare, similar to what roadway would look at, like it was been, it had been cleared with a grader, or with a skater, or a bulldozer, or a bobcat with a blade.
Can you zoom in on that at all? Do you have a project file on there?
I don't, I don't think the PowerPoint allows us to zoom in.
I suspect this may be all a moot point, but I would also point out that clearly there's, on this image, you can see there's walking paths even that have the same basic color tone as the area that we're talking about. I don't think, I don't think just because an area is this lighter shade of gray rather than this darker shade of brown, that ipso facto, it has been machined. I don't know that that conclusion's supported.
Thank you. Okay. If there's no further questions for Mr. Lambie, I'm going to go ahead and close and bring it back to the commission for deliberation.
I think there's one other point I would like to make. In Mr. Lambie's presentation, he showed sort of the superimposed, the rectangular area of the application packet, that then went over this area, and on the application packet, it stated that it was, I think, 20,000 square feet. Well, based on that, that covered all of this area and a great deal more. So, you know, to sort of say, oh, this is consistent with our application, that was probably about, I'm just guessing, somewhere in the range of 80,000 square feet, if the site plan was accurate. We know that they, it's not. So to rely on that, to rely on that and say, hey, it was within our square footage of our application, well, that application information was just simply inaccurate and false.
I would like to note all the tire tracks on there. That's grading.
That's great.
That's, I mean, couldn't that be tire tracks from moving pots?
Uh, no, that's tractors. Those are tractor tracks.
And I don't understand when, the relevance of this particular picture, when, when-
Yeah, I believe this is a photo from 2016. This is, this was the original application material.
Yes.
Okay.
This isn't, this isn't the area where, this isn't the expanded area that we're talking-
If grading had happened and this is before May, that was the original.
There's a date stamp on this photo down here.
Mr. Lambie, I'd like you to take note of the name in the top right corner.
Brian Lewis.
Right, the property owner.
Oh, but that was submitted with the application.
Oh, there's no doubt that his name is in the application.
Okay, just making sure that you know that he's been a contact person throughout all this. Okay. Okay.
Is the resolution going to be amended?
Well, I think we first need to officially close and make sure everybody's done with their comments, and then we can bring it back for discussion and deliberation in how we're going to handle it.
Okay, with respect to the camping and sheltering and recreational vehicles with the three trailers, I'm prepared to find that's a violation, no matter what was done on the notices of correction. I also think the notices of correction could properly be given to the CFO of the company as they were, if they were required, which they were not. And with respect to the hoop house, that's, to me, a violation, and it's pretty clear from the email that Commissioner Bocelli referred to of February 23rd of 2017, that Mr. Lewis was communicating that he was working on the hoop house permit, which never got done. And so that's a violation. On the grading and the fencing, I'm not comfortable including that in a resolution. I don't think there's sufficient evidence to establish grading or removing a violation of the urgency ordinance.
I agree with Kelly, I just, I don't think that what was added on needs to be there. I think that the resolution the way it is, is fine.
Yeah, that's why I asked, didn't we actually add any on?
We asked, we asked, well, we had asked Mr. Lambie if he was willing to discuss the expansion and grading, and he agreed, does not mean we have to adopt it into the resolution, we just had deep discussion about it. That would be if you guys wanted to do that or not.
I did it over the last, I don't understand how we could actually-
Well, if you guys, if we're all good with this, then it's fine.
Right, that would be up to you all, whether that's something that you wanted to add to the proposed draft resolution or not.
I just leave it the way it is.
So I had some real problems with this case, but I think it's, as I was implying before, if we just had a landlord that owned the property and code compliance gave the correction notice to that person, and that person misconstrued, and which I think probably there's, there were the best of intentions here, probably, misconstrued it, we'd have a hard case, and we'd also have a very hard case to confirm the decision of the planning department. If this notice were given after February 28th, 2017, when the county code was amended to very specifically apply these notice requirements to Chapter 17, but neither of those special circumstances apply here, but I think the county should be in a notice that these notice requirements are very specific and certainly encompass parts of Chapter 17. All that having been said, I believe that this, I think the appeal should be rejected, and we should enter into the resolution. I do believe that in the statement of the, of Mr. Mendoza, he says, "If I had known that the hoop house and trailers at 2749 Horseshoe Court were not adequately permitted, I would have removed or permitted them right away." Well, this is an ordinance that was in effect, he should have been aware that you can't just plop trailers on the, on the ground, and, and under the ordinance, he was in violation. I think, I think we just don't have the special circumstances that might have forgiven the, that would have allowed us to grant the appeal, particularly given the close corporate connections of the two parties involved, of Mr. Lewis and Mr. Mendoza. So I, I could join in on the resolution, but I agree that I think the grading is not necessary.
Okay, I'm ready for the recommendation, please.
Okay. Planning staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2017-066, design appeal to 016-461, thereby upholding the Planning Director's denial of the application for commercial medical cannabis registration 2016-461.
Thank you.
So moved.
Okay, I've got a first and a second, all in favor, say aye. Or aye, opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Peter, would you like to read the appeal process?
This action may be appealed to the Board of Supervisors within 15 calendar days. Submittal to the Planning Department or the Board Clerk is a timely filing.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to adjourn for lunch, and we will come back at 2:05.
Adrian?